Okay, we'll call tonight's Housing, Urban Development and Zoning Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Honorable Lords. Honorable Members, welcome.
Present.
Honorable Members, please.
Here.
Vice Chair, Sonny.
Present.
Honorable Members.
Present.
Honorable Members, all.
Present.
Chairwoman Hubbard.
Here.
President Green.
Present.
Honorable Members, we have seven present, we have four.
Okay, with that, we do not have any minutes to approve this evening. So what we'll do, again, I want to make sure that we announce that if you would like to speak this evening, that you're assigned up so we can already have you listed and ready. We are happy to see so many of you here and we are ready to listen first and foremost. So after the introduction, we will move straight into public comment. I do want to make sure that I do the housekeeping of recognizing that the bathrooms are, when you go right out of this door, either one of these doors, you go to your right and immediately to your left, to the bathrooms. And I do want to graciously thank our honorable Missouri State Representative Kimberly Ann Collins for creating this space. And Mrs. Marsha Hawken-Toward, also Director and Creator for letting us hold this space and have this meeting here. With that, I recognize President Green.
Thank you, Chairwoman Clark Hubbard. We're here tonight to talk about Board Bill 31. I'll give a brief overview of the bill before we open it up for public comment. But, you know, really want to hear from folks tonight about what you're seeing, what you're experiencing. And I want to recognize before we get into this that the conversation that we're having around Board Bill 31 tonight is a start, it's not the finish. And so what we are looking to do is direct $30 million in the interest that has been earned on the Rams settlement funding into addressing immediate needs for residents from last month's natural disaster. We know that residents in our community need aid now. And the relief represents what we know that we can distribute quickly to make sure that we are starting to address some of those emergent needs while we work on a plan for long-term rebuilding. In the moment of recovery, our board's goal has to be to deliver this bill to the mayor as soon as possible. And so we have been operating on an expedited timeline where this was introduced last Friday. We anticipate voting this out tonight at the end of our hearing. Tomorrow, it will be second read and perfected at the board. And then I have called a special meeting on Tuesday for the Board of Aldermen to come together and to finally pass this so we can send it over to the mayor to sign and start to get those resources out the door quickly. I also want to recognize that all of us know that $30 million is not enough to satisfy all of the needs. So I want to get that out of the way right now. This is, as I said, the start, not the finish line. And this is what we know, that we can quickly get out through the Board of Aldermen, we can quickly get dispensed alongside the FEMA resources that are coming, alongside the state resources that are coming. And that city leaders have shown throughout this that we are committed to looking at every single resource that we have at our disposal to make sure that we respond swiftly and appropriately to the tornado and the aftermath. The $30 million in funding is also critical to meeting the city's collective obligation to access FEMA funding. We were all very, very relieved that we finally got the FEMA designation earlier this week. And FEMA also requires a 25% match. And that match doesn't have to just be dollars from the city, it can be volunteer hours. And so I want to make sure that I give a shout out to all of the community organizations that from day one have been out there, standing in the gap. Yes. Because not only have those organizations helped bridge that gap, those organizations and those volunteer hours help us to get that FEMA 25% match to make sure that we can access every dime of federal money that we are entitled to. So give one more round of applause to our community volunteers. I also want to make sure that I thank Mayor Spencer, our entire Board of Aldermen, our Governor and other elected officials who have advocated since May 16 to help us get that FEMA designation. It was slower than we wanted, but we are here. And we are thankful for everybody continuing to put the pressure on to get that. Because we know it's going to take all of us to rebuild our city together. The successful passage of this bill will allow the city to financially support some of the volunteer organizations that have been working since day one to make sure residents have food, water, shelter, essential supplies, all of those things to stand in the gap. And with that, I'll dive in a little bit more to some of the specifics of the bill. So Board Bill 31 creates what we're calling the Tornado Relief and Recovery Fund. This will be established by the Comptroller's Office and maintained by the City Treasurer. I might be too close to the speaker, let's see if that's better. Okay, I think that's a little bit better. So Board Bill 31 creates the Tornado Relief and Recovery Fund. And this fund will be established by the Comptroller and maintained by the City Treasurer. This is a fund that can also accept other appropriations. So private donations or other city money can go into this fund as well so that we can work to grow it, again, to make sure that 30 million is not all that is in it. The interest that's earned in this account will also stay in this account and be used for relief and recovery. And any reimbursement, say we've spent money and FEMA reimburses it, that will go back into a subaccount in this year to make sure that we're continuing to use those funds for tornado relief and recovery. The fund's purpose is to support residents in the impacted areas by filling gaps and immediate needs. So one thing I want to turn your attention to is on the last page of the board bill, there is a list of what we're calling impacted neighborhoods. These impacted neighborhoods are what was identified by the city through aerial surveillance as being the areas that were the most impacted. But we want you to look at this. And if your neighborhood was impacted and does not happen to be on this list, tell us tonight because we will make sure that we add it. As everything's moving fast, we want to make sure that we're covering all of our bases. But the purpose of the fund is to support home repair, temporary housing and storage for displaced residents' belongings. And is also allowed to help provide financial help with insurance deductibles. We know a lot of folks have high insurance deductibles. And also legal aid if there are legal issues that have arisen throughout the rebuilding process. The bill will also allow for emergency repairs to be made to streets, sidewalks, piping, hazardous trees, all of that public infrastructure that has unfortunately also been damaged as a result of the storm. The bill also allows for support for nonprofits who are providing shelters and allows them to use funding for snapping and supplies. We know some of our nonprofit organizations have depleted a lot of their reserves as they've been out doing aid work. We want to make sure that we can support them in continuing that work. The fund can also be used for matching funds for state and federal disaster grants. So that goes back to the 25% match that we have to have for FEMA. And just to note that spending on administrative expenses in this bill is topped at its cap at 5%, which means that this bill is designed to be direct aid. It's not designed to, you know, pay a whole bunch of bureaucrats to sit in offices. It's meant to get out to the people, but fund just enough of those administrative positions that we need to make sure we can deploy these funds quickly. As I said, Exhibit A lists all the neighborhoods, so please let us know if we are missing a neighborhood. The way the fund is structured, the mayor's office will administer the fund and provide a monthly report to the Board of Aldermen about the expenditures and the outcomes. So just as we're all showing up here tonight, we're going to want to continue to show up as we get those monthly reports and can understand how resources are being deployed. This bill was also written intentionally to be flexible. As time goes on, we know that specific needs will evolve. You know, we know, for example, we have some philanthropic partners that are coming out with modular homes to be some temporary shelter. And this could be used to support something like that. But also if we have private funders that come in and do those things, then we could redirect those resources somewhere else. So this really is intended to fill in the gaps. And then I just want to close by pointing out that this fund is specifically designed to help residents and while impacted businesses are not specifically listed in this bill, we recognize that there will be future legislation and future programs that will specifically be tailored to small businesses. But the purpose of this bill today is to provide for that immediate stabilization for people, many of whom are not able to stay in their houses at the moment because of the tornado. We want to make sure that we take care of those very basic needs before we work on subsequent legislation for small businesses or for other entities. So with that, I want to turn it back over to our Chairwoman for public comment. We are all very eager to hear what each and every one of you has to say today because it will not only inform this piece of legislation, it will inform legislation going forward. And the Board of Aldermen has been committed to acting quickly to address all of the needs that we can address, to deploy resources quickly. And to do that, that requires us having continual feedback from the public. So thank you for coming out tonight, and I will turn it back over to Alderman Clark Hubbard.
All right, good evening again, everyone. Making sure everyone that wants to speak tonight has signed into the sign-in sheet. Also want to recognize that there may be questions that you may have and want to come here and get answers for that not necessarily we have. But I want to recognize that Mr. John Wagner from Congressman Wesley Bell's office is here. If you have any questions out of that office. And do we have any representatives from FEMA? They said they might come, so just if they do come, we'll have that. And I also want to recognize our colleague, Alvin Alderberg from the Second Ward. He's here with us as well. Everybody that has signed in and would like to speak, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Right, we trust you. Joe, which microphone do you want us?
This one doesn't work.
Well, the clerk has to call the speaker's name. So we can't use the clerk's. So if we need this one, we'll just turn it off and just let him know what you want me to do. Okay, all right. So Jane, can you come up and hold, handle the mic for the speakers? So when you come up to speak, look for Jane. Do we know which microphone is getting the feedback? Ladies Johnson?
Good evening, I'm one of our, and everyone in the audience. My name is Linda Rambeer Shelton. I reside in 18034. My husband and I, former State Representative, Lloyd Shelton, former Alderman and community member. We were at home when our home collapsed. And I called out to my family, Mr. Lloyd, to the basement. And before that, the bathroom I wanted to collapse. And then the inside of the house. We are separated now with Jenny and my husband and grandchildren who were raised and they live rent and sale alone. And I am hoping that the Board of Aldermen, the state money and the FEMA money will help me rebuild my home. I love my home, I've been there 45 years. I've spent like $100,000, replaced 55 windows, all steel doors, everything, right now. And now it's gone. And I want to rebuild in the greaterville neighborhood and I love the neighborhood. And this is my neighbor, Mrs. Lois Holmes, whose home collapsed on there. She lived right across the street from me, and she died from the tornado. So looking for you guys to help us. Thank you.
Justine Kramer.
And once the clerk calls her name, I'm going to bring the microphone to you so he can just reference your hand.
I'm just, I'm just Justine Kramer. I live in the 13th district. I was displaced by a fire. I was staying in, I'm hurt.
Yeah, it was a trial.
I was displaced by a fire. I was living in the 11th ward where I am now displaced by a tornado. My family home was in the 10th ward, which was also affected by the tornado. And now I'm standing outside, I don't know what I'm doing, but hopefully I'll be back home at some point one day. But where I was undecided on Bill 31, I am now in favor. Because it is a start, and it's only a start. I was undecided because when it first came out on, I think it was Tuesday, FEMA decision had not yet come to me. But now that it has, that in conjunction with state money, the FEMA money and the Rams interest money, we can get picked up from the tornado and get people in homes, out of tents and in temporary homes until we can rebuild. But the key word is rebuild. Because those of us who are living in this city, don't stay in this city. I live in the city because I love the city. I was born, raised, reared and taught by the city. And I want to stay here. My children were taught by the city. One of my sons still lives there now. But it's invaluable that we stay here. Now, that being said, it is only the beginning because there is other Rams money to be put back in the North City. Now, we have to continue to know that that other Rams money that we have needs to go to Martin West City. So if I start here, everybody can handle it. So a lab will be have this in the center of this community so everybody sitting here knows that we need to still be at City Hall. After the tornado cleanup, we need more than just one strip to Martin West City. We need the park to go to Martin West City. We need more Rams stores in Martin West City. And we need jobs in Martin West City. Because I have to, I live in the city to make money, but I can't make money in the city because there ain't no work to work. Now, with that being said, as we go on to rebuild and restructure our house, I've been out of my house with a fire for one or four years. And that is due to a contractor that was no good. This family destroyed my house. I am just now getting to a price and I'm rebuilding now with my own personal money. It is financially draining me because I have been paying bills and two houses, I'm paying mortgage, and one house that I can't live in. And I've been getting rented a house that has now been devastated by a tornado. So I just cannot be finished. My thought is, we need a visit. And I talked to Alderman Hubbard, and I was on my way to talk to Alderman's keeper that didn't get to get about having a listed contractor for a no good. Because the one thing I do not know, anybody said if you could rebuild your home to have to build with is now I haven't had the money and not having the money now to finish rebuilding our homes and being out for now even extended period of time. And now not being able to get back to your home at all. So this began in some way, if you know a contractor that is no good, put their name, picture on the list because they changed their business names and they changed their faces a lot. And we need to make sure that nobody is taken by a person who is just out to make their money. Thank you.
I apologize, y'all, for getting messages that the live feed on YouTube does not have audio, so we're going to pause to make sure that it's being properly captured and streamed. Hopefully. Okay, all right, we can pick back up on the speaker this time, Clerk. The next speaker, Jay Osier.
Yes, I like that, thank you. I'm determined, always willing to cover and support Alderman up here today. I'm fortunate that my home was not damaged by tornado storms. But I'm here just as many people have been out here. I have just as many people been out here working to help people in this time. It shows that our community does care. But we also aware that some people out here is going to make a land grab. We are familiar with what happened at Mill Creek, the whole Comptill area, 50 neighborhoods of Black people. And their homes were taken under the guise of progress and development. Team 4 plan of the 9th UGAC of North St. Louis was instituted by Ronald Reagan in urban areas across this country. The block rent monies that were received by the city of St. Louis were used to, instead of used in our communities, was used to revitalize the Central West End. I'd like everyone, as well of our elected officials, we need to contact our Governor, United States Senator because we need more FEMA funds. We need trailers for residents that homes have been demolished and condemned by the tornadoes and storms. This is going to take years for recover to have the contractors come in and do the necessary repair. And some would not be able to get their homes back because they've been demolished by the tornado. They would need new homes. The federal government needs to step up. We cannot be quiet because a closed mouth cannot be faithful. Trump needs to reinstate all the workers in faith that he fired. Because with fewer workers, it's going to take longer for their people's applications to be processed and they can receive their funds. And we need all of our elected officials from the bottom up to get behind our program. And that is to get everything that we can from the federal government as well as the state government because $100 million for the whole state of Missouri costs. And tornadoes hit four spots, including down there in southeast Missouri where a number of Black people live as well. And so we need all, we got to work to get it done. We can't be quiet. We got to work together, keep pushing. Thank you.
SCLCP, is there a way to move one of these microphones? Because what they're saying, I think it's because the audience can't talk in one of these is why they can't hear the audience online.
Those are strictly for us. I mean, we can speak into them, it's good for us, they're online.
Online, they can't hear the public speaking phone.
They have to use the back.
So is there a way to, will these be in the mic stand so that the president can stand with this microphone by the mic stand?
They patch it into the speaker, you mean, right?
Oh, if we put one up on top of the speaker mic, those be your mics? It has to be the speaker that has.
No, it has to be the speaker that.
The speaker, okay. So we'll move this stand over and then when you speak in the mic, come to this stand and hold this mic and speak in this mic. I know we're going to lose some challenges, but we wanted to be here and point us to be here. So this is part of the movement, the audio around. We appreciate y'all's patience and accommodations. So we stay, Jayos hands to the mic and make sure when you speak, you're holding this mic, but you're standing in front of this mic.
Now, when they speak though, that's not going to their speak, it's going out to the YouTube.
Alderman, that's it. Team Robles.
Hi, I'm Team Robles. I am here as a volunteer on behalf of many community members that I have met as I've gone out delivering meals and supplies to people that have been directly impacted. I see persons with holes in their roofs, all of their furniture completely ruined, all of their clothes ruined, holes in their homes and they can't stay there. And every time, that was such gratitude when I go out there, but every time I walk away from someone, all I can think about is how a meal or some cleaning and personal supplies is so short term and who is helping within the long term? Who is rebuilding these homes? Who is restoring the power? We've lost all the food. Some of the homes may not get to the front door because there's so much damage from both the houses and the branches from the trees. It's just so devastating to me. And we need this money because these people are proud to live in their homes and they deserve to be able to live in their homes and have them repaired. So, thank you.
Kelly McGowan.
Prayer four.
So in the interest of time, we are going to keep moving forward, but unfortunately, there will be still some challenges in the audio. The meeting is still being recorded and captured, so even if it isn't picked up right now on YouTube, and I apologize for that, it will still be shared immediately after with the full audio. In the interim, they're still going to keep working on it, but out of interest of time, we're going to keep moving.
All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the House Committee. I'm Kelly McGowan, ninth ward resident, founder and executive director of Transform 314. I am in support of Board Bill 31, which is just the beginning in ensuring that residents receive the which is just beginning in ensuring that residents receive the resources they need in the aftermath of the tornado. I want to thank President Creed for his sponsoring the bill, among the aldermen Aldrich and other aldermen championing this effort. I recognize the urgency y'all are open to, to meet the needs of our city and commit each of you on that. While I'm supportive of this bill, I want to go on the record with some questions and other concerns I have as it relates to the administration of the tornado relief and recovery fund, in addition to revitalization efforts. The bill provides flexibility and benefits to be used in listed neighborhoods. How will those most impacted be prioritized? This process must be developed in an inclusive way and in a manner that is truly transparent. I cannot stress that enough. In addition, if this bill is passed and these resources become available for folks to use, how will this information be communicated? City leaders must be intentional about developing the communications plan that goes beyond putting something on the city's website. They can start by working with organizations that have shown up and shown out in community forums, basements. The city must partner to also develop solutions to barriers such as transportation and internet access. There's no other way right here, but the city of St. Louis is brilliant about seeing that up there. The last thing I would like to note, and I believe Ottawa and Zonka, you mentioned this at Tuesday's HUD committee, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. In other words, the city to respond to the needs of residents and work with the community in its revitalization efforts. I stress work with the community because the threat of displacement is a reality. In these revitalization efforts, the city must incorporate climate resiliency in its approaches related to all infrastructure moving forward, as unfortunately we know, these mothering streams will continue to happen. In closing, I recognize that this bill is the first step in an effort that will take years. Everyone in this room is well aware of the hazardous investment of the north and west sides of our city. Use this opportunity to rebuild with current residents. They deserve it, and our entire city will be better from this moment. Every gentleman, I'm assured that they're on top of their job.
This is the station's face.
We need to meet everyone. I don't think it's real. I'm glad since we have been trying to be rather than everything. So my question for you tonight is a little bit. Okay, my question tonight is about the ARPA fund. So you guys control, um, the grant, the American Rescues Act grant that holds the ARPA fund. You guys also control the LRA fund. So my research says that you guys are gonna tear down almost two hundred houses that are, are buildings, that are abandoned, but you're gonna use pretty close to thirteen million dollars of fundings to do that. And when I researched a little bit further as a professional federal grant writer, I learned that you are gonna take the money from the sixty thousand dollars that is in the ARPA fund that is allocated for neighborhood transformation grants. And people can apply for those grants up until July, but if you guys are gonna take thirteen thousand dollars out of, correction, if you guys are gonna take thirteen million dollars out of the sixteen million dollars, what is that gonna lead the people to rebuild their houses? That's my question.
Typically, in, uh, here is, that is not the interaction. We, uh, take public testimony and then we interact and take it as we move legislation forward, make changes, whatever they, they educate us in our deliberations of it, but it's not a back and forth asking questions. But since we are very familiar, we would answer the questions. Since there was a little bit of, um, missteps in the numbers, so when I get, I can get that to you first, and then we can talk about, um, some other situation this week. Our next speaker is Carol Wayne. Next speaker is Kristy Harvey.
Um, my question. Maybe for me, I think you know to, for some Kristy Harvey, this is a person. You can't hear me? Hello there. I'm Kristy Harvey, I'm from St. Louis. I was born and raised here, I live in the Pinellas, but, um, Karen ties this my mother person. She's not here tonight, but I would have liked to talk to her personally. I think what the city needs to do is collectively work with each neighborhood, the community, organizations, the block units, block units, so we can identify each neighborhood that needs the most help. For instance, Pinellas might not need as much support though, as some of them say the building, or, or other neighborhoods. I know from where I live, south of Natural Bridge is like demolished. As a community that will be totally broken. So what I'd like to see you guys do is collectively work with the organizations that are already in place and they come up with a strategic plan for each neighborhood and disperse the money equitably and fairly, so that we can rebuild St. Louis and have jobs, you know, and keep our city thriving. That's my question.
Tomate Nix.
Thank you, I am on. Good evening, members of the board, thank you for having me to this meeting today. I am here as an abolitionist and a concerned resident of SCL. I want to emphasize that while the proposed thirty million fund is a step in the right direction and is far from enough to truly meet the needs of our community. We need long-term investments, not just immediate relief, to be building up lift for St. Louis substantially, sustainably. First and foremost, the money must be directed carefully and strategically distributed. We need transparent guidelines for where the funds will go. It will support infrastructure repairs, job training, youth programs, healthcare, and self-sufficient initiatives. Only we that burdened organizations that lack the capacity to build real infrastructure for our local communities. We must ensure that these resources are allocated to programs and projects that can truly make a difference, not just short-term solutions. Second, we must ask, who decide these funds are distributed? It should be community-led with input from residents, local organizations, and trusted leaders who have been known to work, people who understand the needs of North St. Louis. This isn't about top-down charity, but about empowering our communities to decide their own future. Third, we want, I want to make it very clear that this fund should not be, or should not replace, federal or state disaster aid like FEMA or Missouri disaster relief. These resources are essential, they must be coordinated with local efforts. We want to see collaborative approaches where local, state, and federal agencies work together seamlessly, filling gaps and ensuring that communities left behind. Finally, I want to share that I too was affected by a recent tornado. However, living in the Central West End, I saw how quickly my neighborhood was attended to. On the north side, I struggled more after the disaster. That, that disparity highlights the urgent need for strategic equitable distribution of all resources. North St. Louis deserves the same attention and investment, but we must do a wise, invest in infrastructure, education, healthcare, and sustainable programs to lift us for long, long term, for all for the alternate. In closing, I urge the board to think beyond immediate relief and focus on building resilience, resilience, equity, and community empowerment. Long story short, North St. Louis needs to be rebuilt, rebuilt with the north side and mine and the people in mine. Thank you.
Julia Allen.
Uh, good evening, my name is Julia Allen. I'm a lifelong resident of the Ville, the Great Ville neighborhood, a proud graduate of the Summer, Charles Summer High School, and a resident of North St. Louis for seventy-five years. I had springs playing around and, and, and. I would agree, you were listening to all of those things that the money was going for, but you know what I didn't hear? People, community, people, community. A lot of that money is going to administrate, I call it what I call administrative cause, uh, causes. I, I agree with the people who stood up before me and talking about community. This is about community. This is not about having an information center at the shake and send. This is about bringing the information to the people and our communities, okay? Uh, I'm also, uh, co-founder and, and, uh, board chair for the Ville. We set up a community hub for people to come in to get supplies, anything that they need. It was only four weeks. We served over four thousand plus people without this. People need help in our communities, like one lady said. We need, we need hubs in our communities where people have access. When you talk about access, you have to think about transportation. How many people have cars to go to the shake and send? That's basically a referral service. The other thing that I think that we need to address also, when we're talking about rebuilding, is case management and education. Our people need people to help them to process and to maneuver all this red tape that is going to come up when they have to apply for FEMA application. They need to know that that money is a long, that is not free money. We need to have people who can case manage them and manage people through this system. It's gonna be a long process, a very long process. And I appreciate the volunteers, the people, especially those people who lost everything, who were out volunteering, helping one another. That's what our communities about. People don't understand our communities. We help one another. We take one another either. We love one another. And I think the city of St. Louis owes, it's time for them to pay the debt. Just to add, but we survived. We have churches already established, uh, St. James Death Club, West Side Happies in the hood. SLDC is setting up at the Monarch, Monarch, Monarch Killer Delight Department, okay? We need that kind of access.
Ms. Allen, then just.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Andrew Ruckert.
I'm so, uh, I don't have like a, uh, a lot of time on representing a lot of blacks who came to me and asked me to tell them what it's like. Uh, my name is Andrew Ruckert, uh, I'm author of a bunch of other stuff, and I ain't got three minutes or time to get y'all, right? But I come from, uh, North St. Louis, I'm a product of it. I'm born and raised in the Bayou Center, I'm Pope Quarter, uh, Ashland Ranch, Ashland Elementary is where I went to. I'm graduating from Central Forum Boys over our own girls and that's rich. Uh, ever since this day, we've been here putting our real roots to the ground instead of what they saying anywhere else, you know? And we've been really doing this and asking these questions. And the main thing that we keep getting back really is the majority sentiment of, don't forget about the roof of the west side. And I mean the real roof of the west side. Not the one that's on the side of their one, it's our love and attention, but the real one that the likes of Paul and all their constituents and Lick and their chops, like they put their dreams and gentrifying more the west and come into a reality. We ask for the same thing that we've been asking since the Great Wars and the early nineties. And now we're open funding for the Rams or at least thirty billion, which is a drop in the bucket. And all these other programs in New Orleans will take one point six billion to, we need to do in order to recover from these tragedies. What we've been asking is this, who are funding for our neighborhoods, it's teachers and schools? Not just when we can bring you state titles from basketball or any other sport that pulls them to three and five. Just like they do with Metro High School that's at the edge of Central West End. Houses for those that lost their home to the tornado without her greedy land developers that's on trial to swim them out of the place. Houses for those who are looking for help before the tornadoes. You got more people living in Vegas than on, on the North West Side and everything else. And to think about a bunch of empty schools, at least those people can live with those when y'all fix them up. According to the St. Louis City Government website, that's four more times become likely to be unhoused. And all those, those empty schools that should be put in there instead of turning into overpriced laws, that would make the problem very, you go up in the neighborhoods and force the people like my brother, who was having seats, generations coming through that house and being forced out to move because of a newfound tax problem. More sensible food options such as farmers markets, something other than food deserts that we all have. We only got Bush looks to share between the North and the West. The rest of fast food, Chinese food, liquor stores, and the newly added diarrhea center on every corner. More funds and resources so that children have something to do, new parks and recreation. As a model for that, you think y'all know, first in, if you get these kids something to do with a little boy too, then that gives them less time to be outside and miss something up. And then also the boy gets that so-called crime rate that the newest home report said so-called helps between the North and the West Side. Can I say this one last thing, please? Look, alright. Work with the street lights on, uh, neighborhood streets out, just like y'all do on the south side and Central West End. And since that trash pick up, just like y'all do on the west side, on the south side and the Central West End. Proctor Ford Street cleaned it, and just like y'all do on the south side and Central West End. And either easier ways to get neighbors of the neighborhood to purchase LRA properties and lots in the city. The SLDC and City Government has lost their minds with who's just to get a tiny house, you know, an empty lot. Meanwhile, you have outsourced that stand instead of helping those that wanna do something about it, doesn't like them their time and their money. Fix the streets just like you do on the south side and Central West End and in front of the GIA. Why you spend white, bad horse speedboats on the road? We got more sickos that's killing all the homes. Last. Pay these EMTs about a fucking incompetent and humane acting police officers that do not, that do a word with something like give them more money so they can come to the neighborhoods and build incentives to come more than just hours later when something happens, just like you do on the south side and the Central West End. Look, I know we got a long way to go, and, uh, the North and the West Side, as we know, basically are distant memory. But we see the bike trails they putting out. We know that y'all been trying to put us out of this tornado, just to spread, this tornado just spread us up the process team fold. However, we have a chance to make this a beautiful situation for all of us without forcing us out. Long story short, don't forget about the North and the real west side. That means don't forget about the generations of black and brown people that have powered this area with home. Thank you for your time.
Jeanne Martin. Tony Stewart.
You're ready, darling.
Jean, Jeanne Proctor.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity. And I am here representing the corporate industry and housing corporation as well as Kingsville Corporation. Both of these entities are trying their best to make a difference in the community. And in doing so, we have been, uh, we were in the process of rebuilding the property at the corner of Parks and Lab, right across from the church that was destroyed. There are enough vacant lots in this city to build anything that we can bring of a thing of. Unfortunately, we, we don't need to have more. We, I spent yesterday and today helping and feeding people and just giving necessities to them that are some living in tents, some who are still in their homes with no power because they only have tar. Some of this money, some people could just be stabilized almost immediately with only a roof. And that has to be done. And for it to take four weeks or more just to get to this point of destruction, it's just very unfortunate. Uh, people have, we've been trying for a long time to make a difference and move this parameter. Uh, so, please, make money available. Do work with the community organizations because we're the ones that are out there talking to the people, uh, hearing what their needs are, knowing what their needs are, and collaboratively, they have been working to get the job done. So please include us in any decisions and set priorities so that we can get people safely back into their homes and into their neighborhoods. Don't destroy North St. Louis. Zayn.
Kevin Poehl.
Uh, good evening. Thanks for your time. My name's Kevin Poehl, the executive director of the St. Louis Home Repair Network. Uh, I was hired on April first as the, uh, the inaugural executive director. So, this thing was created out of a months' study into the home repair needs of St. Louis City. The numbers that study revealed that it would take three hundred and two million dollars to address the home repair needs in St. Louis. And that was before the tornado. That was about seven to twenty-three thousand homes. And that was based on just folks sixteen over. So we all agree that that was way lower than it is. And this was before the tornado. So they, the recommendations that came out of that was to create this home repair network to kind of hurt the cats of all the nonprofit practitioners that have been overseeing home repair for years in the city. Uh, I come from another nonprofit office overseeing a pretty robust home repair program. And, and along with my colleagues, we were advocating for more home repair money for years again before the tornado. So, the tornado hits, a lot of our membership, which is again, is made up of nonprofit practitioners, were an impactors. So, including my advisory council, so for the Ville, more of the youth association, uh, Dream Leaders for Equity, the Airlink Federation of Block Units. So what's been settled out already is I'm here to advocate that absolutely for this money. But, you know, what's done for a community without the community is against the community. I did make that up, but that's, we have to keep that central. So whether it's organizations in the home repair network or other community organizations, that you have to, you have to at the forefront, put those trusted organizations because they're onto it, they have trust relationships, they're in the community every day. So we can't go sending, just blindly sending contractors there. You, you have to tie into the trust of organizations that have been doing work, that started doing work that Friday night at five o'clock, you know? Uh, so, and then I would push a little on that if I'm not knowing the full details. The five percent happened and these organizations are already operating on shoestrings, apparently making a cash flow on twelve percent happening. So I rethink the five percent because they're gonna have to hire, they're gonna have to ramp up, and they're gonna have to address these needs with the community members. So that's, that's all I, thank you.
Stephanie Midler.
Hi, um, I'm a member, I live on the Southside of St. Louis. Um, I had the honor of volunteering for the Black Power Blueprint here on the Northside and, um, really was witness to the heroism of this Northside community that came out and self-deployed, came out the moment after the tornado was dropped. Um, it's, it was street, clearing the streets, blocking off power lines, helping each other, feeding each other for weeks and weeks uh, before anybody else was in the neighborhood. It was truly heroic and it was a search in this neighborhood of the Northside. And, um, there was recently a article in the St. Louis NPR, um, that was called, "Tornadoes Can Exacerbate Racial Disinformation and Increase Displacement." And I just wanted to point it out because I think that this is one of those situations. I really unite with what people have said about the legacy of Team Four and the decades and decades of the non-Black underinvestment and, you know, under, uh, funding of the Northside. And this is an opportunity to, to write that, to begin to write that by funding all of these resources to the Northside. It's not funded charity, it's open, it's the money open. Uh, you know, specifically about this bill, um, there's two places where I think the language should be adjusted to ensure that that happens. And that's in sections one, C, I, I, and two, D. The language says repairing public infrastructure damaged by the tornado. And the other one says repairing public infrastructure in impacted areas, including street sidewalks, water, and hazardous trees. I just feel like the language has to include something like, with priority given to the Northside. Please, I'll like this article that MPR put out though the opportunity of these disparities to be deepened. And I don't wanna see that happen. I, you know, from the Southside, I wanna see the Dummer Drive gone. And it's really, that is blocking the Northside. So that's what I'm here to contribute to this. And I just really appreciate everything everyone's had to say so far.
Christopher Glenn.
Good evening, everyone. I am the president of the Northside Independent Neighborhood Association, which means that we advocate for all of our neighborhoods on the Northside. Just wanna say, I support the sentiment from everyone that has talked about Team Four, that has talked about, um, you know, the, the other conditions that we face. I just wanna say one, one thing about Team Four. Because the tornado, tornado that hit on May sixteenth, that was nothing. We're talking about fifty-plus years of benign neglect, let it rot. And that's what's been happening. That's, that's what made the devastation in the Northside much more traumatic, much more, much, I mean, it's ridiculous to have a program initiated to, um, say, okay, we wanna revitalize and we wanna, um, um, deplete resources. All I have to say is the thirty million dollars is a good start, but we need the full round of money. We need all the resources. The city is sitting on a lot of money right now. And I think it would be a disservice, uh, to our neighborhoods if we don't have all of those resources to bear. We wanna rebuild our homes, we wanna rebuild our businesses. It is imperative. I see too many people walking the streets aimlessly, um, with, with despair in their faces because they don't know who to turn to, where to go. There's not no real leadership that's been taking place up to this point. Um, and I wanna echo what somebody else said, that the people did self-deploy, the black community came out, showed out, and showed up and helped in the best possible way. And it's still the way that's the thing. Nobody had to tell us anything. We knew what had to happen, had to happen. If you see down the road, get these wires, you know, protecting people from the wires. We also, uh, need those monies because there's a lot of talented, um, black contractors out here in the community. We need them to get the money to help rebuild our homes and our neighborhoods and so forth. For too long, we had outsiders that do not care about our communities, don't care about our neighborhoods. We have to make changes. So, again, the thirty million dollars is good, but we really need to have much more money than that. Uh, again, we don't need to bring housing, we need permanent housing for people that don't have housing. A lot of people right now are displaced, totally displaced. I saw the devastation. I went down Newsday and saw.
Mr. Glenn, your turn.
That was three minutes. Okay.
Melissa. True.
Hi, my name is Melissa Trogg, and I am employed by Youth and Need. Um, we are a nonprofit organization that has an early learning center in the Academy Sherman Neighborhood. That was heavily impacted by the tornado. We are one of many community organizations and specifically one of many childcare centers that are standing in the gap and serving as community hubs for families and residents. We've been on the ground offering supplies and hot meals. We leverage our network. We provide services from Montgomery County to St. Louis City. And we've asked all that are associated with us to donate cash, supplies, and have brought hundreds of volunteers into that community to help support the cleanup. We're still there doing what we can, but our resources have been depleted, as was indicated earlier. And so I'm here to support this bill. And as many others have said, ask that we utilize organizations that are already on the ground and connected with the families that need the resources. Lastly, I know you said this bill isn't for small business. However, if the goal is to stabilize families, funds must be distributed to local childcare providers. There are many that were impacted by the storm and had to close their doors. It is essential that they can rebuild so that families can return to work knowing that their children are in safe and developmentally appropriate settings. Lastly, we know that when children encounter trauma like a tornado, they need consistent routines with familiar and loving caregivers. Investing some, not all, just a portion of these funds to support reopening of these centers will help in the stabilization of the impacted families by ensuring children have a safe and familiar environment to go to every day, allowing families to return to work and to focus on storm recovery. Thank you.
Terri Plon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is, uh, Jay Pay. Everybody just say, I'm gonna go to this Jay Pay. I'm here as, uh, Cat Babe, uh, so remembered. Uh, first off, I want to let everybody know that, uh, I was here part of the storm. Alright, and, uh, I was right here in this room with, uh, ladies and gentlemen that's, uh, from all over. Uh, and we went through a struggle, but we made it. And, uh, I helped out a little bit around the community. I've seen a lot since I've been here. And, uh, I just wanna say that when we thought FEMA and all these other organizations were gonna come through here and didn't come through here, the community came through for us. This community right here, now I'm from South St. Louis, but I'm all over St. Louis. Right now, I'm in North St. Louis and I'm staying. And I'm gonna continue to stay here as long as these people right here, Pastor Marshall, Pastor Jack, uh, they came through for me in, uh, in a most amazing way. But anyway, I don't know, I'm not the political kind of guy or whatever, but, uh, I know a little bit about it, but right now, I'm gonna say this, that little bit of money ain't nothing. We need to come together, period. Like this community over here has come together in, uh, 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 just needed together, man. I mean, it's, uh, uh, it's, it's amazing what these people have done over here. You know, I think people up on the streets, me and Pastor Marshall, uh, guys on the street walking over here to the center over here when they didn't have a black car, I didn't have a black car in my building for a week, but we stayed over here at a generator going, and we did the damn thing. And I took it for real, I just speak for real. I'm sorry to cuss, but that's just the way it is. But I'm here to stay each time. I, I welcome you, I, I open the door for them, I give hugs, uh, uh, and that's what it's about. It's not a white thing, it's not a black thing. It's what's going on right now. I'm S K L all the way, period. I'm from my town. And that's what I'm here for, yeah, yeah, you know, like, yeah, thank you all.
Arthur Pogba.
Okay, how you doing? Uh, I'm gonna thank you for having me. That's going on. But for the, for the honor to everybody. I want you to know I've been in the city of St. Louis, the Ville, for a long time. And I've seen many administrations come in and out. Many administrations say they don't do this, they don't do that. But you know what? In a way, I think this tornado was a blessing for this guy. Think I can't, he got nothing to do, walk and do what you got to do. He gotta show some empathy and some truth for your, uh, uh, for your own constituents. So, okay, for your constituents, okay. Anyway, my name is Arthur, and I'm at my steel uncle Greg and Abby. And I was sitting in my living room as the storm came through. And as fast as the storm came through in about three minutes or so, but look at the devastation. I got a house sitting on my house now. And it been on there, leaning on it, and breaking my porch. And I've been calling the L R, I've been calling the, uh, citizen service group and all that trying to get this house off because it's falling more and more down. I just hope this money, some way, can find me to get this house off my house. You know? And I really hope, and I saved forty-three fifty-four for Greg. But, but, but I just want everybody to know, I'm a veteran, I'm seventy-three years old. And I've seen the city of St. Louis change. You know, Sumner and all that, the freedom where I come from. We had an eighth district police station. They just come down, I see, and the, and the kids, you see the neighborhood, take the kids for a ride, say, I don't see that no more. And you know, that had us, that was a good practice, you put the police back in. But then they took the police department out, and then they got rid of our hospital, home and gym. Everybody just, they had one of the best doctors, they had all the best doctors. They knew how to pick you up. Whatever you had, shot and stab, cancer, whatever. But it's gone. And you know, once you take away the institutions, the schools, the hospitals, and any kind of organization that helped you, eventually it goes down to nothing. And then when people from other states look at us and say, St. Louis did this, and you did that. Well, yeah, look what you did. You had pushed the people into a corner, you don't give them justice. And so, I just wanna say, St. Louis was very, very nice. We didn't, we didn't, we not to do. I wish to see it again before I leave this earth. So that's all I got to say.
James Crumpfell. James Strickwell.
Good evening. My name is James Strickwell.
Good evening, my name is James Strickwell, I'm from the north side. I had a, I held a home on the north side that was under repair at the time, and the tornado damaged it more. I had, I was living on South St. Louis, at the bridge, that home was destroyed, I had to move again. I now live a little further over, towards the west, and that home, I'm living there. It's not the best, but I'm living there. But what I'd like to say is that let us not make mistakes with this opportunity we have. Let us consider the other things that we could do. We have youth, couldn't we not train some of our youth to help build a construction that's done and needed? Can't we not consider more resident involvement other than the owners of the property? The owners of the property, they don't live at the property. It's, uh, this bill is weak on doing something for the residents, we need to consider what you can do more for the residents. Thank you, very much.
Windsor McKnight. Hidosia.
I just wanted to, I'm not here to, I'm not here to write about anything, I just have some information I'd like to share with the board. Just a little exercise, can you draw a square real quick? At the top of the square, you put the policy side, at the bottom of the square, you put city equity. On one side, you put need, on the other side, you put project. Now, here's the other side. You have the owner, you have the application, you have the contract, and you have a filing, and it's all good. I am a displaced contractor. I'm here to let everybody know that labor needed, like you say, great, so the labor I'm talking about is just the boards, you just have to register the boards, because they don't have to have a background check to move, trash, dirt, debris, you just need muscle, you know what I'm saying? And help the residents, it's low, they'll clean up their area, they'll clean up the neighbor's area, and they love, they get cans to do it, front that fallen church, this helped them with their daily light bills, water bills, getting the phone turned on, whatever. Now, the other part is, there are some other parts that I can share, but only in three minutes, share, but it's basically a big vision. It's a vision of economic development where the city, the citizens get the equity. City's gonna, because everything's gonna be new, it's gonna raise the equity, the citizens is gonna get their houses rebuilt with, and especially, instead of, like somebody said, shade pool contractors coming in, taking the money, riding, letting, going to work. I was on the opposite, I did the job, they didn't get paid by the owner. So that's not the reason why I got out of the business, because I got two, not financial for me to continue to compete in this way. But, as this program you have set forward is able to go forward, just remember, you control the money, the city's gonna get the equity, the citizens in the affected area are gonna do the work, and all it has to do is follow a couple of other things that I have down there that I can't share in three minutes. But one of the things I do want to share is wherever you start, make sure you got secure fencing, make sure you got restrooms, water for whoever's gonna work, and a parking area that's gonna be monitored, because we don't want to go work somewhere and come back and find a car gone, and then we don't want to come back to that area no more. I just have a lot more I can share, but I'm just gonna just put that out there as a template, because each need is a project. Each homeowner is in need that lives in the affected area. Like I say, thank you.
My name is Hidosia Columbi, Peaches, whichever one you want to call me. And I'm from St. Louis, born and raised, and I love my city, pain in all, the resilience of the people. And I really first want to appreciate the champions that came before them. I almost felt like I didn't even say nothing, because everybody hit point, 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 and I just really, this is why I'm proud of me to St. Louis, the resilience that we feel. And I also really want to appreciate y'all for this bill, and everybody that sent it to the table, because I heard and I appreciate that it just wasn't all the people that sent it to the table to write this. So the time that it took to organize, with organizers, to write this, I really wanted to just express my deepest appreciation for that as well. I'm not here just speaking about a storm, because I think that the storm exposed a deeper contradiction. It exposed the deep contradiction of how the north side had been forsaken, and how it had been neglected, and the mistreatment of the north side. It really did, because if we be honest, the people on the north side was unstable before the storm came, and so that's why the devastation hit us so hard. I am working with people in the community that is not gonna be helped from FEMA, so I'm just gonna flat foot tell you the truth, that we know that some people would give FEMA money, but the dead, the decayed history that FEMA has with the black and brown community shows and proves that the north side was not benefited from FEMA. And I feel like the relationship that, that the state, that the city government has had with the north side, this is an opportunity for y'all to get it right. And even though I, I almost didn't want to get up there and say that, because I'm tired of my feelings getting hurt. I'm tired of broken promises, I'm tired of bills being passed that we the ones that suffer from. We pass bills and they tell us that they don't fix our parts, and they won't be a higher water bills, nothing fixed in our parts, and I'm tired of it. And one of the things that I really have concern about this bill is when we talk about nonprofits, it can't just go to any nonprofit. It's been nonprofits that been on the ground since day zero, they activated themselves, deployed themselves, got, did the work, and built real genuine relationships with our community. I know and I can testify that I've been in soup lines, I was failing lines and had to give my bill pay, and I know how people can make you feel as nonprofits, like you ain't human. So we gotta go to organizations and nonprofits that actually have relationships with the north side, real relationships, because that's part of the healing that we need. When I've been calling to families, it's, I love my people so much, because the people who have been devastated, they be saying, "Let me just pass this round, because somebody else need it." That's the people that I'm serving. My people deserve the best, so this is not a request, this is not be on my genes, I know, and I'm gonna finish saying this one statement, and I give this my go. This is a demand. This is a drop in the bucket, but we want all the Rams money.
Good evening to all, just here. I really don't have much to say, because mostly everybody already said it. Only thing I have to add, really, is, for one, North St. Louis has been indicating for centuries. It's been a long time before the storm came through, and mostly everybody in here knows that. Those buildings that got hit were already falling down. So, we're trying to make a big deal out of something that's been going on for a long time. It's true that North St. Louis need help, but North St. Louis, South St. Louis, wherever, need the right kind of help, not any kind of help, not greedy and money hungry people. They need people that's actually gonna help, because there's people that pay taxes, that stay in this city, that help put money in y'all's pocket. So, if you want that money in your pocket, do the right thing for these people. Our people have been mistreated for a long time, and we all know it, for a couple of reasons. Because for one, we don't read anything. We don't read anything. We focus on a lot of foolishness. We let our children focus on a lot of foolishness. Then we want to blame somebody else when something happened to them. But that goes for the parent just as well as the child, because you know how to raise your child without somebody have to tell you. But, I heard a lot of people say a lot of things in here. For one, about stores and businesses not being in North St. Louis. We know why they're not over there. So if you want those businesses over there, act like you want them over there. That means keep your hands in your pocket. Because, the thing you all have to realize, your children or anybody going there and stealing stuff out their stores, I don't care where they at, taxpayers pay that, you pay that, now you know why your grocery bill is high. Now you know why things go up, because what you stealing it, you gonna pay for it. But the people who are not stealing, they gonna suffer the consequences too. So it ain't only going up on you, it's going up on everybody, because of what people are doing. You talk about jobs, well, there's some people out here that don't want to work. So, it's not so much that jobs is not out there, there's some people that don't want to work. You got, but I'm just saying, you got people that don't want to work, you gotta remember all these things.
Good evening, everybody. Alright, my Alderwoman, where she go? Do we, do we know where Alderwoman Keys went?
Bathroom.
Okay, so I'll address her at the end. So my name is Dr. Jasmine Nolan-Eckles, for those of us who have not been introduced to me yet. I want to make sure that we understand the reasons why I'm in opposition of this bill. Not only, thank you Alderwoman for returning to the seat, not only, I gotta go back. I am born and raised North St. Louis, College Hill, Penn Rose, all the things, that is where I was born, and this is my home, so everything I'm gonna say to you specifically and by name is as a result of this being my home, not somewhere I visit, not somewhere I spend the night, not somewhere I come and fly by. This is my home. This is a smack in the face to everybody that lives, pays, resides in my home. When you wrote this with Milberg, you did not consider my home. You did not consider the people that own in my home. You wrote this to pay back nonprofit organizations in which you are considering. You wrote this to pay back insurance companies in which you are considering. You wrote this to pay back investors in which you are considering. You wrote this to pay back people that do not pay here, live here, own here, raise kids here, go to school here. You wrote this without considering any of them. My grandmothers are seventy and seventy-five years old, and not, no time has this come by her, has this been asked of her, have anybody been considered before you wrote this, along with all the other bills that continue to be passed in the city by way of people that do not call this place home, my neighborhoods, not yours. So I'm gonna say this specifically to the names, I want to call everybody's attention to Exhibit A, at the back of this bill. This list was created by way of what you all value, not my value, not my home, not my neighborhoods. My neighborhoods are at the bottom of this list, because you strategically make sure that we are systemically removed from everything pertaining to the city in which we pay taxes in, just like you do. The city that we voted for you, just like we do. So what's going to happen is I need you to go back to the drawing board with Milberg and everybody else here, and reorganize and restructure this bill to make sure my home is prioritized, not your agendas, not your buddies, not your companies, because you left out businesses. And I have to make sure I make this statement really clear, my businesswoman for a reason. So I put up twenty-five million of my own money for my home, I wasn't waiting on you. So my time will end with this. Alderwoman Keys, my neighborhoods are at the bottom of this list, and you and I both know what that means. You and I both know what this Purpose Section One and Two means, when my neighborhoods are not listed by name, by taxpayer, by voter, by resident. You know what it means, you know what the wording, the language, the systemic continued racism in this document means to my home, do not allow them to sit complacent and incompetent and pass this without prioritizing my home.
Uh, my name's Rachel Hurtado, and I've been a member of the Grassroots People's Response over the last month that self-deployed and has served five thousand impacted families and counting since the tornado. I'm in support of Board Bill Thirty-One, but I'm here today to urge this committee to go even farther in your work towards recovery. Roosevelt Town Homes is just one example of how dire and urgent the need for this action is. This is a hundred and forty unit low-income housing building that has its windows blown out and floors flooded by the tornado. Every single resident, including forty seniors, were immediately displaced, and the property management company changed the locks, so residents lost access to their belongings, including life-saving medications. People are living outside of their cars on the street near the, near Roosevelt, and residents were told by their out-of-state landlord that their belongings would be considered abandoned and thrown away by tomorrow. Passage of these funds is the first important step, but this community has concerns about the bill's implementation too, as y'all have heard. This fund cannot operate like the city rental assistance program, or take as long as the impacted tenants' fund has taken to stand up. I urge the elected leaders of St. Louis to not replicate the egregious wealth hoarding that we see in this federal and state governments in this country uphold. We have no business keeping these relief efforts from dipping into the principal amount of the RAM settlement when the most vulnerable people in our city are suffering now. The future of the north side, especially Zone C in the neighborhoods between fairgrounds and O'Fallon Parks, depends on how the city chooses to respond right now today. If you withhold critical resources in the name of saving for the future of St. Louis, the working class, the elders, the black communities in the city that ground the history, the art, the culture, the heart that makes this city who we are, they will all be forcibly displaced and disappeared by the time our city government decides to spend those funds on development. It'll be too little and too late. I hear y'all acknowledging that the thirty million is not enough, it's just a start, so I encourage this committee to advocate for and pressure your colleagues and this mayoral administration to be willing to spend more than just the interest of the RAM settlement fund on investing in emergency and long-term support on, into the north and west side. If there was any time to dip into the principle, to go out on a limb for your people, to leverage y'all's power, to even risk your political career, the time is now. When the future of St. Louis as we know it today hangs in the balance. At the hearing Monday and a couple of times this evening, residents have said that the whole RAM settlement should go to investing in the north side, and I don't believe that that is an unreasonable ask, it is owed. It should not be even a question of whether the people are worth that investment. The question is when, and the answer is right now today. The question is when, and the answer is right now, today.
Uh, hurrah. I'm Westbrook, uh, the local president of Vipita, which is International People Democratic Uhura Movement. I wanna begin by saying, uh, with 5,000 damage or destroyed buildings, 1.6 billion dollar damages in our community, and seven deaths, oops, is not good enough. But not only oops is not good enough, we heard repeatedly that 30 million dollars is definitely not good enough to overturn the contradiction of a lack of leadership from City Hall. Now, I heard a lot of folks wanna blame the act of God or blame Mother Nature, but look at Clayton, uh, Mother Nature went through that too, and it didn't cause a type of devastation on the West and the North Side. We know that this is generations, or at least 50 years of benign neglect from Team 4 playing. We know that the South Side lived at the expense of the North Side. We all know about the Delmar divide. But, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate it. Weeks later, y'all come up with 30 million dollars, but come on, what are we talking about? We have 42 million dollar surplus. 42 million dollar surplus, and we can't even get that? Number one, the funds from Harper, from the funds, from the, uh, 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 Rams and, 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 and everything that's attached to that. Turn that loose to the people who need it. Now, now, when you say turn that loose to the people who need it, first of all, you got a list of, first of all, you got a list of, uh, uh, qualifications that people need. But don't you know most of this documentation, folks don't have because of the destroyed house? So how, but then you got the audacity to put a, a deadline on it that's two months from now? That, that don't seem right. So who is this for? The people. You say it's for the people, but the surplus, the, the, the government got 42 million dollar surplus. But I hear y'all say only 5% of this 30 million dollars is going back to y'all. 5% of 30 million dollars is a lot of money. Why not turn all that loose since we can't get, uh, 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 this 1.6 billion dollar, since we can't get this 1.6 billion dollar budget? Now listen, I'm for the end right now, because I'm not for the lack of fire. I think we had a lot of different community leaders, uh, uh, like fire on the y'all, so hopefully y'all do what's just. Uh, but like one of the sisters said, and I'm glad she said it, because, uh, it just don't seem right. Two of the most devastated area is at the bottom of the list, O'Fallon Park in College Hill. But if you look at the top six, Forest Park, Skinko, Devalva, Delmar Place, Central Rest In, come on now. Is this just another way of force out? Please tell me you're not gonna, once again, leave the residents on the North Side out to defend for themselves. Uh, hurrah.
Good evening. Um, Ikingay Maile. And I've listened to everyone, and I trust this council has, the Alderman have been listening as well. And my question is, when? It's already been almost a month. People have had their power turned on, had their power turned off. Some people's homes are livable. They could go in and start repairs if they had access to resources right now. Looking at this process, the way it has been instituted, it's gonna take several more months for people to get any assistance, any real assistance that they really need. In the meantime, their homes are meal doing, crumbling down even more. Rain is expected over the next few days. I trust that even in this process, this, I mean, it's a great, great effort, and I applaud you, uh, for even making the attempt, but it's not enough. It, it, it's just not enough. We need all the money. The North Side needs every single solitary dollar that is available. The mayor said the city is flush with resources. Then get off of it, give it up, give it to the people, give it to them now. They will do the work. We're not asking for you to come and pick up the bricks and move the trees. We've proven that we can deploy, and we will deploy. We will help ourselves. But we want what is ours, and we want it now.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Wale Musa. I'm with, uh, Community Justice Coalition, and also with the Campaign for Human Dignity. I wrote some things down so I can be as precise and, uh, as I can. First, I want to thank the Alderman who is sponsoring this bill for the efforts that you are making. 'Cause it's not so often that we have a bill that is sponsored by almost 85% of the Alderman, on the bottom of Alderman. Second, I wanna say that, uh, the devastation in our community, in our city, is massive. I don't know if you have traveled around all over the region, especially in the city of St. Louis. We're talking about massive devastation. Third, I wanna say that, uh, I see heavy equipment all over Forest Park, Central Western, Skinko, Devalva area. I don't see a single heavy equipment in North St. Louis trying to move anything in North St. Louis. And that is just an indication of the disparate manner in which North St. Louis is going to be treated. As the sponsors of this bill, I want to caution you to please be sensitive to the fact that if you are not, if you are not, uh, vigilant, your names will be attached to another example of mal treatment of Black people in the city of St. Louis. I believe that, uh, there should be a detailed assessment of the damage that was done neighborhood by neighborhood before you start spending a penny of money. Because you cannot begin to distribute monies when there has been no determination of the scope. In fact, let me put in a mathematical version to you. What if it would take 2 billion dollars to make people whole in this community? And we're talking about 30 million dollars, which is less than 5% of what we need to make this community whole. So I'm saying this to say that you cannot begin to allocate resources when there is no determination. Thank you. Okay, well, what I'm trying to say is this. Number one, there needs to be an assessment, neighborhood by neighborhood, to determine the scope of the damage and what it will take to make those communities whole. Secondly, we have an opportunity here to do something we have not done in a long time. We have an opportunity to unite this city. There is nothing more important, there is nothing more important than trying to make the residents of this city whole. So anybody that's, this is the first administration in the city of St. Louis history, over 200 years, where you have an administration that is coming into office with some surplus money, ready for that administration to begin. Anybody that thinks that all they're going to do is spend interest money is somebody that doesn't give a darn about the lives of people in this community. 'Cause I tell you this, I tell you this. All the gold in the world cannot replace the life of the least person in this community. So we are ready to fight with you. We're ready to support you. We're ready to work with you to mobilize and unite, not just 12 Aldermen, all of the Aldermen, all of the religious people organizations in this community, to make sure, because we believe when we stand together, we will not be pitting one community against the other. We will do the needful in this community to make sure we are not sacrificing the life of people because of the historic malady of racism and pettiness that has destroyed so many lives in this community. We're willing to support you, but you must be ready to fight like hell for every penny from whatever it needs to be gotten to make people in this community whole. Thank you.
Um, good evening. My name is Kayla Reed. I'm the Executive Director of Action St. Louis. Action St. Louis is one of the two orgs anchoring The People's Response, which spent the first 22 days at the YMCA and is now located at Kingdom Church, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And Saturday is still serving the six neighborhoods that touch the two parks. Don't start my time yet. That was information for everybody. Um, I supplied you all with the document. So part of what Action St. Louis for the Culture has been able to do is help the city stand up what we call the Resident Assessment Forum. Over 8,000 residents have filled it out through the Ville Hub, the Y, a hub at the Y, other sites, canvassing, um, and we've assessed so far 5,900 households. Over 3,200 of those households reported significant home damage. 11 of those are reporting utility disruption. Um, we have had over four inches of rain so far. My weather app says the next eight days are going to be nothing but raining. And so the very fragile structures, those tarps, those plywood, that's not gonna hold if we get eight more days of rain. And so in part, we made this to show that 30 million dollars is a start. And as the person who chaired the Reparations Commission, the report was out in September of 2024. Not one of those recommendations has become a policy by this board. I'm here to tell you, it's just not enough. And so what we've long said is that these are choices. What has happened to North City is not benign neglect. It is a choice. It was a choice to divest. It was a choice to ignore. It was structural, it was systemic, it was harmful. And a natural disaster completely collapsed half of the city. We had to ask for this meeting to be in the neighborhood. We had to argue about the shape that's not being the site for the DAC. I, Action St. Louis, will not take a penny of this 30 million dollars. Everything we have done, we will continue to fund for, to make sure the neighborhoods have what they need. And it's not enough, y'all. We've had 8,000 volunteers come through the Y in the first 22 days. It's not enough. We are beyond capacity. The people holding the mental health of folks, beyond capacity. This is the neighborhood I grew up in. I've seen most of you, all but one of you, at the Y. You've seen it up close. The destruction is beyond what we can comprehend, but people are standing in the gap, and they have their heads down, and it's taken four weeks to get to this point. And it takes months from a dollar to be allocated, to be spent by the city. So this 30 million won't come free once the mayor signs it. And I know that this unanimous, united front situation for 30 million, it's not gonna look like that when we come back for the next 100. So for those of you who are sitting here now, remember that the devastation drive across Delmar after this 30 million, 'cause your work is not done. The need is substantial. We have paid for hotels for older Black women, a 60-year-old Black woman who red-tagged apartment, had her sleeping in a tent on the ground with a brand-new hip. I've turned around and saw my aunties, yes ma'am. I've turned around and saw my aunties and cousins who still live in this neighborhood. Five people died the night of the tornado. More people will die if you do not respond. And there is no cause of death labeled tornado for the second wave because we were too careless and we waited too long. It still is life or death. FEMA can come, the state can come, but you all are the people we directly elect. You have the highest responsibility. I have worked on your behalf. I've worked against some of y'all. It doesn't matter right now. Right now, it requires us to stand in the gap to support our people. And 30 million dollars is not gonna be the crater that got left by the tornado.
Of course, I have to follow Kayla. Um, so Casey Fowler-Pinn's sixth word. Um, the North Side community is truly incredible and represents very best of St. Louis. The leadership, compassion, and highly organized work. Being led by self-deployed community groups is something the city could learn from if they're willing to listen and set their excuses and egos aside. I have a, I hope I didn't delete that in my notes. All right. So I wanna know, how will we prevent outside people from benefiting from the people's suffering? 'Cause this is a known pattern in disaster relief, where those who are paid to rebuild benefit, and the people who suffer don't get what they need. This involves both helping the people navigate the system and oversight on the process to make sure that people aren't being taken advantage of by people not invested in the community. And the community needs to be centered in this conversation. Another point, how are we gonna actually decide who gets assistance? By the way, Forest Park should not be on that list. Let's let the county pay for that for once. And who will distribute the funds? Who will be conferred in this conversation? This can't be something the city comes up with. There have been a staggering number of tone-deaf comments made by city leaders that are atrocious and disheartening and show a true disconnect with the community. This should be led by those community most impacted, which involves, among other things, frank and open conversations with the leaders of those community-led relief organizations and the people who live here. And they need to be leading this effort, not sidelined, not erased, not giving a cursory conversation or a scheduled meeting that is canceled at the last minute. They need to be front and center to this effort.
Good evening, everyone. And to everyone in all your respective places, I appreciate y'all tonight. I stand in the gift for all of us that have been affected by the tornado. I live in the Ville neighborhood, and I have a daycare that was hit. And I, I just got lights on just a couple of days ago. The building is still there, but I know it takes baby steps. And I see everybody that have came out, that have worked for me, that have pulled bricks away from my home just so that they could get to the meters and all this. My concern right now is the children, the babies, our future. When the tornado hit, uh, the sirens did not go off. All I heard was, "Take shelter now." I had three children left. I got them down the stairs before I could get to the door to shut the door behind me the storm hit again. My thing is the children. I love each and every one of us, but who's gonna come behind us? Who's the future? What are we gonna tell them? What are we gonna show them? How are we gonna support them, love them, whatever? They're coming up under what some of us have to offer to teach them, the children. And I think when my three-year-old came back up and she saw- And I think when my three-year-old came back up and she saw the devastation, she said to me, oh no, what happened? It's all broken. And I was just in tears because she is three. She did not know. The four-year-old said, oh, Miss Benny got us to, I am, it went on. She said, Miss Benny got us sent to safety. So I thank and praise God for that. I do stand in the gap for everybody, each and every one of us because divine that we fall. But when we unite and we stand, we need to stand up for one another, not against one another. Put yourselves in our place, in our shoes, and see how far you can get. I love to be on a big there and I have been a child provider for over thirty-seven years and it wasn't mine. I thank and praise God because I don't have a job now. And that's okay too. But God, my concern is the children. I have had several calls since the tornado. Have not had any electric or water. Still don't have water. But my power is dead come on because they did put the meter up. So my thing is the children. I love the children. I want to see the children grow up and have some kind of compassion is the way we teach our children, what we teach our children.
Ms. Samuel, that's a lot.
Okay. And I just want to just say this again. We have to do better with what, we have to do better with the resources we have, what we do, how we use them, how we will get them out there to help others. It's a lot of people that need help.
Yes.
A lot of people right now.
Yes, thanks.
Zaki, thank you. Uh, as you mentioned, my name is Zaki Bierudi and I represent the Universal African People's Organization as well as the Community Justice Coalition. First of all, let me just say on a humane side that my heart goes out to everybody, all of the families that lost someone, as well as the many homes that have been destroyed. And I salute those who of goodwill went out and helped the people day one. Let's give it up for the people. And also I just want to make a special acknowledgement. This brother right here, uh, our organization, uh, have been working with Point of Connection at the corner of Ashland and Newstead because they've been feeding the people since day one from sunup to sundown, basically. So I just want to say that. But again, I just want to say that we had a really moral crossroads. A moral crossroads. And I say this as I had said to the committee here Tuesday morning. We need some heroes and some she-heroes. I say it's a moral issue because it has been projected that one point six billion dollars in damages. And we're sitting on, from the Rams settlement, two hundred and seventy million dollars. I appreciate and I stand in support of you offering this bill for the thirty million. But you have heard from the cries of the people. Not Zaki Bierudi, you have heard from the cries of the people that say that ain't even, it, it just ain't enough. It just ain't enough. So I'm putting it out there that among you, someone be the first to say, I support all of the Rams money going into helping the disaster area. That's what I'm hoping for. Cause I know some moral people that's up here. So the challenge is for you to stand up and set an example for the nation out of St. Louis, out of the state they say is the show-me state. Set the example. And finally, with all of that expenditures of dollars, I would be remiss that with the, it gotta be equitable spending of the dollars with black businesses. Got to be. And I would hope that you put into place a very transparent listing of the various businesses or however you're going to spend the money, who they go to. And you consider the black community because as people have, okay, I'm gonna close on this. As people have said in the past, Team Four devastated North St. Louis, benign neglect. So that's, that's just stand up. So I'm looking for the heroes and the she-heroes. And I know it's among y'all, somebody, all right? All of the Rams money. Thank you.
While Ms. Gibson comes up, I want to make sure that everybody that's in the room that wants to speak has signed up before we close the list out. It's seven forty, almost seven forty-five. The clerks over here, if you haven't signed up, or they raising their hand, make sure you're signed up on that list before we close it out.
Madam Clerk, can you call the next speaker again?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm, I'm Lou Moy, uh, President and Emeritus of St. Louis CBTU Chapter. I'm also Chairperson of UAW Local One Ten Retire East, uh, Chapter. I too want to thank all of you for the work that you're doing and thank you for, uh, Board Bill Thirty-One. And I, I, I wholeheartedly support the thirty million dollar start. As you said, it's, it's a start. I do have some questions. My first question is, is there a plan or can we get a plan to re-rebuild the neighborhoods in North City block by block? My second question is, can individual homeowners receive funds, money from the city pot, the state pot, and funeral pot? Will they be allowed to receive monies from all entities? Thank you. The other, my next question is, are there any programs or planned programs for the youth in the affected areas this summer? I believe it would be beneficial to concentrate on our youth as well that are in these affected areas. My last question is, will there be funds to replace homes? I've, I've heard about repairing homes, but will there be funds to replace them? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Madam Chairman, everyone else in the room. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to, uh, say that our Minister Charlie, the Board of Science, Temple of America, yielded with it, battled tornado, but not severely. Thank God. I want to thank God for blessing us. We also are going to be doing a tornado relief drive, resources that our community, twenty-nine seventeen North Sarah. So anybody in the area that need resources, you can come out on the twenty-first and get those resources. Uh, next, I would like to really, really thank President Green, uh, for having the courage to really come and do something for the people, you know? Because basically, uh, when you think about it, some of us had the opportunity to get mentors in our lives, get educated, have, you know, uh, good education, learn about financial literacy, and was able to put a few dollars aside. But there's a lot of Janatos Wilkinson's out here. Don't have a dime in their pocket. Not one penny in their pockets with their babies. So I thank you for having the courage to at least start the process so that women and children can have access to shelter and have access to food, even though we know this is definitely not enough. We want all the money. We really do. One other thing I would like to say in regards to, uh, what's taking place, we think about the COVID situation, the five hundred million dollar COVID situation that the city received off the backs of the consensus track of North St. Louis. We didn't get not really no dime out of that. Even when you think about the infrastructure bill, the forty million dollars that went into infrastructure, not even one person in North St. Louis was working on that project. Nor was nobody working based upon the art business, if the workforce artists. And then you got, I go down the slate, you got eighty people looking for a job. And yet there's a first source contract with the developers that they got assigned with Slay to hire these people, yet nobody's still working. These are things we need to think about. So trust is very important. Now I see what we had said that the mayor's going to be administrating this. Now we need, we have organizations in our communities that need to be building their capacity as well. Cause the mayor just went into a contract with Mary Slay with nine million dollars. Dead nonprofit organization. I ain't see Mary Slay not one time with no broom, a shovel, a brush in his hand helping out. But I did see STL, uh, Invest STL. I did see Action St. Louis. I think they need to be implemented in this bill in collaboration with the mayor to ensure that the trust element is there, that the people can get these revenues, who is intended for. And not none of the nonprofit organizations that's been living off the backs of the people for so long. But real genuine people that care for the community is very important for North St. Louis. Again, we need all of the Rams money. And y'all know, we, we need you, you, we, you, you need our help. We got to help President Green. She had already took the initiative for the, for the, for the interest. Let's help her. Let's help her get the rest of the money. If you willing to go out on a limb and help us, we are willing to go on a limb and help you. Thank you.
How y'all doing? I just want to say thank you to each of you, all the people that came in and all of those representatives that represent North St. Louis. I'm really from the West Side though, but I was born in Ridge. I was born on the North Side. But, uh, anyhow, just, just really, really short, really, really sweet. Um, I'm sorry, let me speak into the mic. Just two things. And I want to just address those of us that are in the room that go and vote. I want you to take a look at who has shown up for us. Who has shown up for us? And we need to make sure that we make our voices heard at the polls. Okay? That's it. That's all.
Good evening. To Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. To Madam President and to all of my friends here with the Board of Alderments. We, first of all, did you all notice that we have the majority of the Board of Alderman here in the Ville? We need to give them a hand. We really do. Because they are here, you know, concerned and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes meetings and conversations that are taking place. And I just want to let you know that these are the hardest-working people because I know most of them. They are the hardest-working people that we have in the city. And I see somebody that's got a sign up there that says, rebuild North City. Keep that sign up in the air. My name is Michael Burns. I'm the President of Northside Community Housing. And that's exactly what we want to help do, is to rebuild North City. Northside has been in this community for almost fifty years, working in capacity of rebuilding homes. If it's new or rehabbed in this community, Northside probably is the one that did it. So we stand committed to continue to do that work. And I just want to let people know that we've actually working on a redevelopment plan for a historic designation in a specific area. So if by chance you live south of St. Louis Avenue and, uh, east, the east boundary is Sarah, the west boundary is Lambden, and the south boundary is Kennely, then I probably need to talk to you. Because I need to let you know some of the work that we want to do in conjunction with the residents and the owners of the properties in that area. We're actually getting ready to submit a plan to, uh, the State Housing Agency in order to get tax credits, historic tax credits, to benefit those owners that own property in those particular areas. So if you heard and you're in the, within that boundary, I certainly want to talk to you to give you more information about that. So one last thing, nineteen fifty-nine, we had a tornado here. And my mother was pregnant with me sixty-five years ago. And we were living in the car square area. At least I was living within her in the car square area. But she moved us to this up-and-coming area called the Ville. So what that shows me is the fact that sixty-five years went by, but we rebuilt. Because when we moved in the Ville, there were grocery stores, confectioneries, barber shops, record stores, pharmacies, shoe stores, everything was in that area. So I just want to give you a little hope, even though it looks desolate, it looks like it'll never happen. It looks like the money that is being proposed is not enough. Trust me, if we continue to work hard and work together and continue to move forward, we will definitely rebuild North St. Louis. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good afternoon, y'all. I'll be very brief. I've been working with a coalition of communities at the hub located on Natural Bridge um, since the tornado started right there, the Save-A-Lot lot. And when I go home at the end of the day, I turn on the news and I try to review the different news conferences so that I can be aware of what's going on. A lot of you don't know, but many of you might actually know, I was raised in Sharon Tyes's Ward. I still have a lot of family members who live in Sharon Tyes's Ward and all the women, Laura Keys Ward, and all the members, Shemene Clark Hubbard's Ward, and so on. So I have a vested interest. We've been here for centuries at this point. Um, my reason for coming today is literally because I've seen enough with local government to know the last thing that anybody wants to do is touch the reserves. I understand as a former city councilwoman that you have to maintain business as usual in the city of St. Louis in order to keep everything going within the budget. But this is not business as usual. This is a tragedy. Not gonna lie to you, when I saw the thirty million, what I, what I thought of was when you pour beer in a keg and the foam at the top, and then somebody literally takes and just wipes off the foam. That's what the thirty million sounded like to me. It definitely wasn't enough. And I've listened to, to several conferences over and over again where the city talks about, it's not going to be enough. We need the state money. We need the federal money. That's true. But what can you do in terms of what you have available? Surplus, is anybody going to talk about the reserves and the surplus? I mean, that's money, like, that's the foam at the, at the top of the keg. Is that anything that any of you all are going to support in touching that? And if so, how much? Um, I know I can't get those answers. Thank you for explaining it. I know I can't get those answers now, but... I know I can't get those answers now, but I propose that question to the community. You all should be asking, how much of the reserves are you gonna touch? And who on the Board of Aldermen is going to support any of those efforts? And so that's all I wanted to say. Oh, and last thing, last but not least, in regards to the bill, my brother Darnell said something really interesting and I thought it was, it was significant considering the times. He said that the city of St. Louis currently has a ram in the bush, so we need to use that. They have a ram in the bush, that they can use.
I'd like to thank the Alder people for being here for us. Like I said, this is a first for me, I'm 75, okay? And to see you guys here in North St. Louis is beautiful. It's a start, the 30 million is a start. And just for a little background, I was born at Homer G. Phillips. I went to Marshall, I went to Turner Middle and I graduated from Sumner High School, okay? I have been here to see it all. When I was little, we had small mom and pops grocery stores on the corner of my block, on each corner. We had a supermarket on Martin Luther King, better known as Easton Avenue. We had a supermarket we could walk to, we had drug stores. I wanna see that again. And I know all of the people have suffered a lot. And I have seen our community go down for lack of attention. The block I live in, they have six houses. When I remember, houses was from corner to corner, side by side with no vacant lots. We got these people coming in from out of town, where I live now, the whole corner which is vacant is owned by somebody in New York, okay? You guys are not doing anything for us, it's time to step up, okay? I love my community, I love the whole city of St. Louis. We invite and we accept anybody, whether they black, brown, white or green, if they wanna live in North St. Louis, we welcome them. And we want to welcome you guys to come and join us and see the community that we do have. It's true, I was driving down the street a day after the tornado. There were people, our people, on the side of the street selling hot dogs, playing music and enjoying themselves and showing people we are resilient and we will continue. And when the dust finishes, we still will be standing, thank you.
Hello, thank you, members of the board and thank you to everybody that has already given testimony. My name is Chris Adalino, I'm a resident of the sixth ward and I'm also a member of Democratic Socialists of America. I wanna echo something that's been continuing through line through everyone's sentiments here, which is that while $30 million is appreciated, we know investment is needed, it is not enough. I think everybody is aware of that. And while there has been a lot of discussion about the full Rams money going towards this, which I think is a great idea, I think should definitely be explored, I also think that that is not enough. All the money we have sitting in piles, and that's not just locally, you know FEMA money, state money, we are going to need a lot more than that. And there are a lot of people in St. Louis, wealthy individuals and institutions that claim to be for St. Louis and talk a big game about how for St. Louis they are. And I, you know, I think it's a great time for them to prove it while everybody's looking, looking where the money is going, where that investment can be directed. And if they aren't gonna do it out of the generosity of their hearts, it's time to put political pressure on them. Not just the people seated at the table in front of me, but the communities around us. We have power as organized people to get up and demand that this is, this rebuilding is done in equitable fashion, that St. Louis is a community of all of its people, not just dots of businesses and universities and places along the central corridor. So I encourage those, all of those options to be looked at. And this rebuilding, the money coming from the city, not just to be, you know, squeezed like blood from a stone from the working class people across St. Louis who already are looking at higher property taxes and other expenses. And finally, I just want to also address that as we look at oversight for these new buildings that are coming in, to carefully consider and look at how to improve on, what I'll say, oversight or mistakes that may have happened in the past. There are current projects where we've given money to companies like ICL Chemicals being built in the north side. That was approved by SLDC without oversight from the board. And are currently building at taxpayer expense because of incentives, new factories that will put experimental batteries and chemicals in the path potentially of tornadoes. Do we wanna end up in a situation where these companies are, with one hand, taking money out of the pockets of working people in St. Louis and the other pouring poison back into our communities? And thank you again for all your time, I see the rest of mine and thank you for everyone that's gonna testify after me.
There's a white SUV that's blocking the fire department, the fire truck. If you have a white SUV that's parked directly just east of, they moved, they got them, okay?
Hello, my name is Sarah Archibauer, I live in the seventh ward. And I'm urging the committee and the full board to support Board Bill 31. As many people have said, it is a good start. And I hope that the board takes seriously its role in funding the needs of the people of St. Louis in all that it does. We know that the tornado so damaged public schools in North City that six will not open this fall. But the fact is that our public schools have long been harmed by policies that allow rich entities to avoid paying taxes at the expense of students. And so as we talk about rebuilding, I hope that the board can pay attention to future TIFs and tax abatements to examine where we're losing out on money that could be spent on turning the city into one where nobody is displaced and everyone can thrive. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tamika Stigers. And I am a proud resident of the city of St. Louis. I grew up in the Ville neighborhood and I currently live in the west end. And I just would like for everybody in this room to pay attention to who's here and who's not here. If you don't know who's war, who's the representative or the Alder person for this ward, her name is Sharon Tyas and she should be here. I'm just gonna say she should be here, because it's important that she's here, to hear her constituents. I'm thankful that our state rep Kimberly Ann Collins is here to hear from her constituents. Representation matters, your vote matters, so think about when you vote next time. Alder people, I'm glad to be standing here in front of you guys. I have something to say to you and again to the, the people here. This board bill, I understand, I think I understand the heart of what you were trying to do, but it misses on so many levels. So I'll just start with the seven, alphabet, the alphabet here is seven pieces of information that says what you will fund, what you can do to be eligible. So out of the seven, we have a percent associated with one. So that means the $30 million that you're gonna allocate, you're specifically saying that 5% can go to admin. So we look at the, the part that goes to people, the part that goes to infrastructure, all those things. Who's gonna decide how much goes where? That's important, it should be in this bill. It should be laid out, it should be plain and clear so that we can understand what goes where. Because you could just say, we gonna put it all towards the streets, the sidewalks and make everything look beautiful so when the people come in to steal the land, it's laid out nice and pretty for them. Put some percentages so we can be clear about what is going where. Also Alder people, if you guys in the audience didn't watch the hijacking of the Rams bill at the end of the last session, you're all responsible for it, I saw it go down. Y'all hijacked it and then Megan got up there and closed the meeting because she was upset and she didn't like how it went. Stop playing in our faces, for real. Please stop playing in our faces. Don't sit up here and act like y'all so supportive of us, of putting this drop in the bucket of $30 million and then you go back and you change up how you vote and you figure out how to hijack it, we tired of it. North City needs the whole allocation of the Rams money, the whole allocation. I'm not playing like we need all of it. If this tornado can't do nothing other than help us come together, if not now, when? North City is bleeding. You guys have the duty to do what we elected y'all to do and we elected y'all to legislate. We elected y'all to legislate. I don't know how many of y'all who don't live in North City, the Alders who don't serve North City, have driven through even before the tornado. Do you see what's going on? Do you see the devastation? Do you, do you see it? And for you to not see, you have to not see it, you have to not see it in order to say that we shouldn't put this whole allocation. Our, our former comptroller said we had 150 million in reserves, not, not even with the 42 million surplus. What's keeping you? Who pulling your strings? Who's pulling your strings? That's telling you not to go ahead and help reinvest in North City. I wanna know, it gotta be somebody, it gotta be somebody. If we all see it, how do you not see it? How do you not see it? If not now, then when? This tornado can be the most beautiful thing to happen to North City. Out of devastation can come beautification, if you all decide to do it, if you all decide to do it.
I didn't think I was ever gonna be able to get up here, but I just wanna say thank you for everybody that's here. And I definitely wanna thank Pastor Marshall and Pastor John for having this facility. This facility is a crucial beacon in this community. It, it is a hub for the community, for us to have engagements like this. I'd just like to say for my own thing, nobody's coming, nobody's coming. In a couple of more weeks, we'll see that nobody's coming, cause this will die down. We've been giving so many broken promises before that it really doesn't matter. That's the way I feel that we've been treated. There is something called benign neglect and it is orchestrated that nobody's coming here. The Palmer Keys, they want this. So therefore this is part of the systematic design to not put money in here to help us. So as we move forward and as the days go by and if it takes 30 days to, to get a bill going and things like that, where are we now? And I heard people say words like trust and all of those different type of things and transparency when we're at the bottom of the totem pole on the list as far as if it's gonna, if we're gonna go according to that list. We didn't make the list, that part, that's what I'm saying. Where are we as, as, as a collective of people, as, as a group of people that are trying to, and not trying, we, we're coming together. When I came through here after the storm, this place was open right here and there was people that are in recovery in this place, moving trees out of the street and orchestrating in my neighborhood, making, letting cars go through and telling people to stop and getting trees out of the street. It is going to be up to us. Grassroots, don't wait on no money, if it comes, it's good. But we have to organize and do what we can do as a collective, because ain't nothing promised. Nothing is promised, only thing that is promised is that we gonna live and we gonna die, that's the only part. So I just pray and hope that, don't be upset or hopeless because this organization right here, the one that I'm standing in, it wasn't built off of nobody's money. And then today, it's one of the biggest baseline organizations in the city. So I'm just saying, don't worry about it, just be about it, and that's all I have to say.
Excuse me, ma'am who just spoke, what neighborhood were you? We wanna make sure if your neighborhood was not included, we. Okay, the bill is on the list, okay, just wanted to make sure.
He's gone.
I'm Ned Fisher, I'd like to, I've, I've been volunteering with Action St. Louis and it breaks my heart when somebody's home's destroyed and all you can offer them is a tent. Also, I'd like to point out that $30 million, if you divide that by, by the average home price in St. Louis, that comes out to about 165 homes that you could afford to build. So that is a very tiny drop in the bucket with 5,000 buildings that have been either destroyed or, or partially destroyed. It's a very small drop in the bucket and we definitely need the money, the full Rams money as it should be spent in North St. Louis where the need is greatest, not the central west end. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I did owe what everybody has said up here. My name is Karen Greer, I'm from the Elevated Eleven Ward, I'm very disappointed. We are in a state of emergency on the north side. I'm gonna say that again, we are in a state of emergency on the north side if this bill goes through. I have been in a situation with the COVID relief. Those funds that would apply for, for the pandemic was applied for off the backs of the historical disinvested neighborhood. However, when that board bill got written and approved, it left us out, it left me out. People like me, I'm a business owner, I'm a resident, I'm a long-term resident, I'm a descendant of the benign neglect. I moved back to the north side, a block over from where my family lived, on Adelaide and West Florence, 2106. LRA ended up owning that property where that building was tore down and it was a vacant lot. It is now owned by the LRA. LRA owns majority of our properties in the North City, St. Louis, from a devastation. That was part of the Team Floor Plan. Now I am looking at the new Northside Plan that you all are creating for us to go right back down a deficit. Y'all should not let this happen because it's gonna be off the backs of y'all blood and y'all name. Make this, do this bill over, it's not right and to put us back down at the bottom. I didn't even know O'Fallon Park was a neighborhood, I did not know Fairground Park was a neighborhood. I know there are historical parks that experienced massive devastations, our trees. We just got through planting so many trees in Fairground Park which I sit on the border and to see that devastation hurts me. I am now living with anxiety, driving in a neighborhood that I came back to live in, that I grew up in to see that y'all finna put us right back in the same situation that my parents went through and having to move out of that brownstone beautiful brick home that is no longer there. We have a ripple, ripple effect of cause and effect. Let's go back with that COVID money, they, they decided to. Let's go back with that COVID money. They decided to put in a board bill that they're gonna give the unsuccessful, what was called labeled losers, twelve-five. We still waiting on the twelve-five. We still not have received yet. We're still bleeding. We're still hurting. We're still going through devastation. We're not even eating through this devastation. Okay? When I ride through to go home, my house may not have had the impact that I see in this neighborhood, but I gotta drive through it to get to it. And it still hurts me. I'm feeling lightheaded when I'm riding through my neighborhood. So yes, we all gonna need some therapy. Especially if you put this board bill in place, you're gonna have to pay for that too. We going through some traumatic experiences with our families and most of the families now have to move. We didn't have nothing to struggle with. Y'all taking our urgent cares. Y'all taking our pharmacies. Our school systems are failing us. We have a low rating where our children have to be bussed out. How do you think development is gonna bring families back? They don't want to come back because you all don't want to help us. So how do you build up a community without families, without children to go to schools, to go to these parks that we're trying to rebuild? We rebuilding for what? And we in a reassess here, which our properties are gonna go up as a result of this disaster. We are looking at Kenlock on steroids, ten times. Please don't let us leave us in rot. Kenlock rotted. If anybody has not been to Kenlock or watched the documentary, look at that documentary. Y'all gonna see what we looking like if y'all let this new North Side Plan take effect. My name is Karen Greer. Fix it and fix it now. We need all the Rams money. We don't need the two percent that they took off the COVID money to give the twelve-five. We don't need the interest of the thirty million which was interest. Y'all giving us the pennies that y'all, y'all think this, it's not nothing. That's nothing. Give us the whole pocket. Instead of this being the state of emergency roll out the red carpet because we definitely deserve it. We've been paying the same taxes in Central West End, the South Side. We're still the operation paying earnings tax from our businesses. We can't even get our businesses boarded up or tarp because we're businesses, but we're still the heart of the city just as well. Y'all taking taxes from us? Give us back what we invested in this community.
It's my grandma's friend. Hello, everyone. My name is Kami Thomas. My voice is out a little bit, so I'm gonna keep it super duper brief. And I'm also very happy that I kind of cleared it out because I really just wanted to speak to you all. So I'm an artist. I'm based on the South Side, but like most of us, I grew up on the North Side. My dad, grandpa, everybody on my dad's side went to Sumner right down the street, so I'm very, very familiar with the area. So since May sixteenth, my friends and I, me and my friends, a group of artists, we have come out on the streets every single day. Today is day twenty-eight. Piled up the pickup truck with food, fresh meals from the Fat and Calf, from Yamanga, which is a Brazilian spot, with supplies that people donated over to the Luminary on Cherokee Street. And every single day, we drive street to street and ask people directly, do you need anything? Are you hungry? Do you have what you need? Do we need to come back and get you something? People ask us for bug spray or for tubs that they can put the rain as it falls through their roof or just whatever it is that they need and we come back every single day. Today, we came back right before this meeting as well. I have been waiting for a time, a good time, that we can stop doing this because I have a full-time job. We have full-time jobs. We're just doing this every single day because we see the need. We're like, hey, let's do it for a week. It might take about a week for the city to step in. Okay, maybe it'll take two weeks for the city to step in. Okay, maybe it'll take three weeks. And Saturday makes thirty days of us every single day. My voice is gone because I run my body absolutely to the ground. I myself have not emotionally processed any of this and I really, really need to. Like, I thought I was gonna die genuinely of a broken heart, driving through the North Side on the sixteenth, getting all the texts, seeing the Facebook posts about Centennial Church. I'm driving, trying to get there to help and all the trees are blocking us and the wires are down and I'm getting out and it looks like people are leaving their cars hurt. Like, I haven't processed any of that because I'm just waiting for a time that it feels safe enough to be able to kind of pass that baton. So I say that to say, I know like every single one of you all and everyone in this room too cares about St. Louis deeply. I can say how much I care about St. Louis and how much I love St. Louis, but I'm sure it just mirrors what you all feel. But I'm asking you personally, I need y'all's help. Like, I need your help with taking care of the specific people. And when I read a bill like this, I'm not in politics. I don't want to be. It seems stressful. But when I read bills like this, it's overarching. It's the overall umbrella, the bigger picture, which is the point and that's what you all are doing. But day by day, I'm like, why are there still people I'm talking to who have said they have never seen any city presence on their street? There are people who thank us and say like, we thought you all were with the city. You all or other volunteers are the only people that we're seeing. So it genuinely makes me feel like I cannot stop. I'm like, okay, well, Ms. Mitchell, there's four grandkids over there. We got Marvin on Ashland. We have Linda and Lily, her mom and her, and they sit on their porch every single day and we ride by with food and they just got their power back on four days ago. Like, these aren't strangers anymore. It's starting to feel like family. And I keep saying, well, you know, I don't know if that's a sound for my time, so I'll hurry up. But I'm saying this to say, I don't, again, I'm not into politics. I don't know the law to the extent of being able to see exactly about within the bill what's good or bad in my personal opinion. But all I'm genuinely asking is like, we need help with the personal stuff. We need something in here and that that takes over, that actually goes to the people and asks, yes, ma'am, that, whoops. Did you say that? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, what's going on? I'll hurry up. But something that has a plan for this direct to people, going street by street, we're gonna keep going as long as we can, as long as my body can physically withstand it. I'm gonna keep doing this with me and my friends. We're going off the funding of just me posting on my Instagram and people then knowing me. When that dries up, I don't know what else to do. So within this, I really do hope there's something specifically that goes to the people and that knocks on the doors and asks people, what do you need? Because the needs are so changed. Like, some days will come and they need food and then the next week, everyone needs trash bags all of a sudden. Like, the needs change every single time we're outside. But I don't want to like hold the responsibility of, you know, me and my friends having this knowledge of, okay, who needs what, who hasn't eaten today, who doesn't have internet and they can't complete their college classes and he's trying to do that so he can provide for his kid. Like, we have all this information in our head and I just want to really like pass the baton in that particular way. So within this bill or whatever else, other efforts that you're already doing, that's just like my personal ask from St. Louis City residents. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, and it's Shauna Cole. My name is Shauna Cole and I was born and raised in St. Louis, nineteen seventy-one, June twenty-sixth, Home and G Phillips Hospital. I've been all over this city and I'm probably older than some of y'all on the panel. And basically, I'm speaking to you guys. I don't know where y'all come from, but thank you for being here and I hope that y'all intentions are wholeheartedly invested in this community because this is serious. Y'all think the tornado came through. If you guys don't allocate that money, just imagine, just imagine. And my main focus is the children. These children out here are suffering. They've been suffering, but they're still suffering. So can y'all take some of that money and pour it into these kids out here? And if y'all need some help, I'm here. I've been advocating for the minority for the last fifteen years and it's troubling out here. There's some things that y'all don't know about because y'all didn't come up around it, but I did. College Hill over there in North St. Louis, twenty-fourty-nine East De Soto, okay? Twenty-fourty-nine East De Soto. I'm a product of the nineteen fifty-nine tornado with the Cole kids. Google it. Look it up. It's documented. My mother was Brenda Cole, Brenda Joyce Cole. She was eight years old. She couldn't defend herself. They didn't give them resources. So I'm here today, sixty-five years old, sixty-five years later, fifty-three years old, and I'm glad to say I'm here and I'm happy to be here to witness this and to be a part of this movement. I've rolled through this whole city from Clayton, the West Side, the Central West End, Newstead area, and our area, College Hill. And it's sad. And I hope that each one of you guys have rolled through the areas, not just the Central West End and Clayton. Come ride through the hood. Come ride through the hood where it's good, okay? And we want to stay there. That's a family home. Fifty-three, fifty-five, sixty years of tradition. Y'all can't have that. So what I'm saying today is, I'm representing the streetwalkers, the hustlers, the players, the gangsters, the single moms, the runaways, the strayaways, okay? So we're important too. A lot of them couldn't get here today. A lot of them don't even know about it. But I'm here. Shauna Cole is here and I'm gonna spread the message and we gonna be on y'all bumpers. And I'm just letting you know. So be ready. Y'all look all pretty and cute, but I'm saying y'all gotta put them boots on and put them hoodies on because we gotta get out here and we need to be out here, okay? It's bigger than the thirty million because that ain't nothing. Puff Daddy gave that to Cassie. So this thirty million y'all talking about, where is the hundred million? Yeah, that's my time. It's y'all's time too, okay? And I'm gonna leave y'all on that. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having this hearing here. It's very important that it's in the community where people can actually attend and actually see that you guys are in the physical space that this tornado has impacted. So thank you for taking the time. For those who don't know me, my name is Constance. I run the North Newstead Association. We are a community development corporation that has been serving North St. Louis City for the last thirty-two years. We, thank you. We own and operate a hundred and thirty-eight units of affordable housing. Five of our, or eight of our buildings were destroyed. Sixteen families were displaced. We are in the community and we have been working and calling our tenants every single day. We are not the out-of-town landlords. We are not a landlord on the South Side. We have relationships with our people and we are trying to find somewhere for them to go. The reality from the Affordable Housing Report Card that came out in twenty-twenty-three is there's not enough housing. When I'm up here, I want to tell you guys to be more specific in the language of the mechanism and the timeline of when these dollars are actually gonna come out. It cannot just go to anybody. I've already had people come into our office and say that I went to a very popular, always gets the dollars organization and they were yelled at because they were asking for some help. This language needs to be very specific to build those relations, leverage the people who are already out here and work with us so that we can actually get the help to where it needs to go, so we can find permanent housing for our families that are displaced. The reality is that the census in twenty-thirty is coming. The population in St. Louis has declined and will continue decline. If we don't have housing for people to stay here before twenty-thirty, it will jeopardize the federal funding that St. Louis has and we might not come back from that. We need housing in North St. Louis City so people can stay and people can come back so that we have a different trajectory for the city. There is urgency for this and we need to be working with trusted organizations and not organizations where all the money will go to their administrative bloat. The reality is that the timeline and the work and that urgency is there. Because guess what? North Newstead, we're still waiting on that North Corridor grant dollars. We got internet back this week. I have a sinkhole forming at the back of my building that I tell my staff, if you don't see me one day, check the sinkhole because I might be in there. I'm asking my staff to show up to an office that has no air because I'm still waiting for the city to deploy those dollars. There is urgency to this, not only because we are only five years out from the next census, but organizations like North Newstead, we're taking a thirty percent cut in our revenue because of displaced tenants. We will not be around in twenty-twenty-six if there is no urgency to support existing organizations doing this work. So I urge you all, be specific. This is a very general bill that says thirty million dollars for tornado. There's no timeline. There's no specific allocations. There are no percentages except for the admin. But we also, thank you, but we also need to pay people to do the work. I understand that there is an admin fee limit, but we need to pay the people to do the work. I have staff and I was out at five PM that Friday night and guess what? We kept going. It doesn't matter that paychecks aren't getting cut because guess what? We self-deployed. You know why? Because there's a lack of trust in community that there's actual help coming.
First thing I'd like to thank God because this could have been a lot worse, y'all. You only lost a few lives and we're talking about materialistic things, things that can be replaced when human life can't. So I'd like to thank my board of all, all the women. Only three things I want to say. Apestis, lead paint, that'll be a problem later on for us. So we need to think about that because when you buy a new tire, when you buy a new car, they have a spare tire there. Not to say you gonna get a flat, but just in case you get a flat. So it's gonna be twenty, fifty. It's gonna be some time where our kids are gonna be faced with asbestos and lead poisoning. So we have to think about that when we think about this thirty million. And also, I'd just like to know, how many houses can thirty million buy in the Central West End? That's what we need to think about when y'all think about that list that you have. If that's what we're prioritizing by the minimum income that that region brings in, how many houses can thirty million buy in the Central West End?
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to follow up on some things a few people said. First of all, just a moment of silence for those who lost their lives during this disaster. And I also just want to say and highlight how this disaster has brought our community together, how many people were out on the streets the same day, within thirty minutes, passing out water, passing out food, bringing the community together. And something that somebody else said earlier today is that maybe this is what North St. Louis needed, that sometimes God gives us a shock because it needs to bring attention to a situation that was there already. Thirty million dollars for the amount of damage looks like six thousand dollars per building. That's nothing. But look at the status of North City before the tornado hit. Violent crime in North City and in the North City area, you are six hundred percent higher than the national average to be a victim of a violent crime. That's six hundred percent higher just in theville, just where we are right now. You look on the news and you ask, what are the ten worst neighborhoods in St. Louis? Eight of them are in North City and theville is number four. Five hundred million dollars is what would actually be needed to fix this damage. And that is just to fix the structural damage. What about the community damage and what about what this community has been going through for years and years and years where you can't even feel safe to walk to the store or the store is just not even there anymore? What is going on when Schnucks, there is a shooting inside Schnucks. People are pulling out guns and shooting each other inside the grocery store. So this tornado brought attention to a much bigger, more dire need for action. Our community has been brought together in this type of time of crisis and now we need the funding to magnify and mobilize this social energy to transform the status quo right here. We need to take the amount of effort being made by people with nothing to mobilize and turn that back to the government, to the people who have the ability to do something and do something about it. Because the people who have nothing and have very little ability to make change are out there putting their all into it. Does it take a tornado for the dire condition that St. Louis is in to be addressed? Well, clearly it does because that tornado came and it's hit here twice. It says a second time North City is It says a second time North City has been hit by a tornado exactly in the same spot. And several people have highlighted the needs of the children. And I just want to say, the fathers and the mothers who need to be there for their children, who need to have a home to go to, with it being six hundred times more likely that you'd be a victim of violent crime, and now they can't even lock their door because they don't have one or they don't have a roof and people can just come in. Thank you. And thank you, Cafe, for funding this.
It's... Kind of disappointing to have insurance still not be good. In fact, I had nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of insurance. And I'm not good. I haven't received a damn dime. The insurance companies, the business owners that are... that we assume are here to assist the people in this effort to get back to normal, they're here price gouging. There's no restriction on what they can charge you. I was quoted seventy thousand dollars for windows, just windows, in my home. I lost a lot. I lost buildings. I got damaged buildings that I didn't have insurance on, and I can't get anything from FEMA because I didn't live there. So it's a lot of people that are displaced. There's a lot of people that are displaced because they didn't occupy the space. Maybe they were working on their own home, and they lost it. The home that I live in, I thought I was good. So I can only imagine what people that didn't have insurance are going through. I didn't have clothes. I didn't have the money for the three thousand dollar tarp. I didn't have... I lost two vehicles in the storm. I lost, you know, personal equipment, mobile home, and motorcycles and stuff like that. I'm not crying about that stuff because we came out of it alive. But at the end of the day, I look around, and my time has been focused on people that don't have... That don't have insurance. They couldn't get tarp's. They couldn't get... You know, can't get around. They can't, you know, they can't do the basic things. And some of them are sleeping in Fountain Park right now in the tents. You know? Had it not been for the 501(c)(3)'s, and I'm real critical about those 501(c)(3)'s until now. Had it not been for them, we wouldn't have been able to sustain. I'm keeping it one hundred. We're almost thirty days in. And at the end of the day, these funds that we talking about, imagine not eating for thirty days. Imagine not having any place to go for thirty days. So you can kind of see how important the 501(c)(3)'s and nonprofits have been in us sustaining. So I'm disappointed in my city government. I got to keep it one hundred. I'm not holding no punches. And I'm not one of those buck-dancing preachers that's running around here getting funded, looking to get in between the money and the people. No, that ain't me. And I'ma call them out at some point. But when it's all said and done, the people need help. They don't need help in the future. They don't... They need help now. There shouldn't be no limit on how much we need. We need whatever it takes to get back to normal. And that should've been the budget. That should've been the discussion when the thirty million came up. There shouldn't have been no thirty million dollar idea. It should've been... It should've been a full... Full... The full amount available to get us back to normal. That makes sense. But let me say this. There's a lot of attention on the thieves and the looters. And we're going around looking for somebody to steal small items out of our property. But when it's all said and done, the real thieves and the real looters are the people that are coming to your building, coming to your home and charging you crazy prices for things that are... That you know don't cost what they're charging. And there should be something done about those people who are here gouging. You know, people that are already hurt. That makes sense.
First, formal screeds to you all in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ. I moved my church in this area December first. And so, being hit with the tornado, I lost the building that I worshipped in. During that same time, I lost my father, my nephew, all right around when the tornado hit. But yet, still, I was out. I'm hitting the streets. I don't know exactly what pastor... And bro, whatever pastor you know that's out here doing wrong or trying to get some money, please let me know. But what I do want to say is, I hope that you all know the Lord. That's most important about any decision that you'll ever make. Ask Him for guidance. And I promise you, you would do the right thing. Don't do it on your own, Mary. Do it on the Lord's, Mary. And if you don't know the Lord in the parts of your sins, today is the day to know the Lord, to get to know the Lord, and then let Him direct your path. So then, people will then come together and understand that you're operating through the Spirit on what to do. And He's not gonna misguide you. He's not gonna mislead you. People are asking me now, since I lost the church, "What are you gonna do?" I'ma keep my butt right here. I'ma keep my butt right here because I know that there is a way. And I know there is a will. And I know that the Lord will get us through this. But I'm asking you, when you make your decisions, seek God first and have Him to direct your path. As far as the youth are concerned, that's my thing. That's why I wanted to stay in North St. Louis. I was in the Drum and Bubba Chord, the Lancers, practicing at Tandy Park. So I know the neighborhood very, very well. So those that are out here looking for something for the youth to do, thank God St. Phillips has allowed us to worship there because I didn't want to leave this area. So we're gonna do things with the youth. We're gonna do things with Tandy Park. I got a lot of things that I want to do, but we need your help in order to do it. But again, seek the guidance from God and not yourself. Thank you.
Hello, all. My name is Leonetta Nelson. I live in the Fourteenth Ward. I'm a general contractor. I own my own construction company. So the coolest part about being that there's a understanding with the city of St. Louis that we have to do certain things, having certain insurances and workers' comp and all of that, right? And so, within this devastation, I got to witness that there were a lot of out-of-town contractors. And see, at that moment in time, we were the first ones to get on roofs, tug-point frame. But we were never considered to be paid, right? We risked our lives. We stepped up. We did all that we needed to be done, but yet still, never compensated. And I'm not saying that that is a thing that, you know, we're looking forward to, but our reserves are running out. We yet still our hearts within our city. So in that capacity, I'm just trying to understand that where do we fit in that, realistically? Because we are literally coming out of our own pockets, and we need to be a part of those conversations because a lot of us, as contractors, between GoFundMes and whatever other resources that just so happened to come. I've had tools break in the middle of working on individuals' homes, but yet still running right to Home Depot and just going to go spend our own money. Like, this is a heartfelt situation for us to rebuild as contractors. And it would be behoove of you to have out-of-town, I mean, companies to come in when you guys require us to have certain things to be legitimate contractors here and don't ask us first. Because our hearts are in this, our minds are in this, and we're in here for the long haul. So I just want to thank you all. And then, too, I want to give a shout-out because I did see a lot of our state representatives getting on roofs, calling me out, sending text messages and stuff. So Kimberly, hard hat and all. She was on roofs too. You know what I'm saying? So I really got to see the constituents really be out there, really literally lifting ladders, tarp's, whatever we needed to do to make this happen. So please just consider us. Understand that we are our city. We are the part that we need to be to build our community and what that looks like in a total understanding. Thank you so much.
Ariana Johnson. I'm here. I'm here on behalf of the youth. I mean, from day one, I've been pushed underground for helping people with tarp's, board up, and things like that. And then the summer came. So I feel the kids have to do something. So I started... We started building tiny homes, you know? So we out here, I got age ten through twenty-four, twenty-five. You know, we building tiny homes. The community came together. I love telling you, I'm talking about... I'm gonna thank the audience. I'm gonna thank everybody who came together because the community did something. I mean, this situation, nobody can get it... Like, any city would've had the same problems. I mean, the mayor came in her first month. I know she had problems, you know? I'm here with the youth. And I'm not asking for anything like that. I'm asking for the support from the city, the youth. Because if we don't support them now, then sometime, they're gonna be more locked up and more situations like that. We got a vision to build a hundred houses. We already built a couple houses. We gotta... Now, we don't have the support to get the houses from the spot to toe to the other spot. It's the smaller things. About guys like today, I'm the only... I was the only male there, and I have forty-two teen boys. But we build today. I'm teaching them the fundamentals of carpentry because if you're gonna rebuild St. Louis, I'm being honest with y'all, it's not gonna go back brick. It's not smart enough to have all the houses go back brick. It's not gonna happen. We don't have enough tradesmen to do that. Right now, we have problems. There's not enough tradesmen out there. So we gotta train them right now because it's a five-to-ten-year rebuild. So we gotta train the youth now. I'll be honest with you. It ain't enough... Like, we can get all the money in the world, but everybody gonna be waiting on one company to one company to one company. We don't have enough tradesmen. And we... Right now, we got the youth to become tradesmen. I mean, they get intrigued. Y'all come down to our camp, they intrigued. They ready to go. I mean, I let them know that it's gonna take five, ten years to rebuild, but they gonna be in the rebuilding. Y'all talking about the money going out of the city or from different contractors. We don't have enough contractors here that actually know how to do work. I'm being honest. So that's why. They not skilled enough. So I'm here representing the youth. We ain't... It ain't nothing. We trying to get started in something that we already started. We been doing it for like ten days. I teach them trade on Wednesday, Thursday, we in the bookwork. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we building. I mean, y'all can come by. Y'all have heard of us already, but we building homes for the community. Some people might don't want to leave. But I mean, we building a tiny home there, a hundred and twenty square feet. But it's the difference. You know what I mean? It's shelter. And honestly, y'all, we give out a hundred homes jogging up right now in five years to make the whole program look bad. So that's not my plan. My plan is a long-term plan. I'm giving out two-year free leases with free maintenance. Every three months, my guys become... We do maintenance on the property. Because we don't want this program to look bad and houses messed up in the future. But this happened again. St. Louis got a hundred houses stacked up. A big fire happened with a complex. We got houses that could barely get people. So who doing it? The youth, the youth are doing it. You know what I mean? But I'm here after that for the youth. I understand everybody's situation, but these houses are not going back brick. We got... There's still some carpenters. I mean, it might go back fake brick, but we got enough brick to make another thirty million dollars. To sell the brick, make another thirty million dollars. It's not gonna go back brick. We don't have tradesmen that they had back in the day. Them a hundred-year-old houses. And I promise you, it's not... We don't have it. It's not skilled like that. But we can make it look... We make North Side look good again. But if you don't want outsiders coming in to rebuild it, we gonna have to start with the youth. Rebuilding with the youth. Put more attention to the youth. Because y'all call them kill boys and YN, they young carpenters. Like, if y'all come to my camp, you see how they skilled. They ready to learn. But they need the support. You ain't gotta have a dime for us, but step down, let them see our smile. Let them see that somebody actually cared for them. Because now, you're gonna look around your back every day trying to say they gonna hurt you. But I'm teaching them from the fundamentals on up. If y'all really gonna rebuild St. Louis, we gotta rebuild it ourselves and it's gonna start with the youth. And that, that's all I have to say.
And hopefully, everybody is prepared for what's been happening here that haven't happened since 1959, and the turn of the century also. But I do salute you all up here and give you credit for all you, all the hard work and everything you all been doing to make this disaster look a little bit better. But I'm also here supporting Walea Musa's point of view. Walea Musa said everything that need to have, to me, that need to have been said today, and where we go from here, and where we stand today. I believe he gave truth to power, and I hope you all understand that. I see longtime activist Lou Mara here from the union. I see Brother Zaki Baruti here, along with myself, longtime activists and stuff like that, to let you all know that we're here and we really mean business. We have a beautiful board up here. We want to keep it that way. But again, 1% of anything when it comes to the disaster here will not fulfill and will not fill the holes of what's going on here in the city of St. Louis. $30 million, not even 1% of what's going on here. We need to consider and start restructuring the bill where it affect every household in the city of St. Louis and every ward in the city of St. Louis perfectly. I understand that it was some houses and neighborhoods that were left out after reading what was going on and seeing personally what was going on myself. So we need to consider reconstructing the bill that affect every household in the city of St. Louis appropriately. And I think with that said, along with, again, I say Brother Walea Musa said whatever and everything that need to be done is said, along with all these other very important points of views that said here today. And I also like to say thank you to the board for supporting the bill, the whole postponed tax sales in the city of St. Louis. I don't know whether everyone know that tax sale was postponed in the city of St. Louis. That was what, passed last week, two weeks ago? If your tax was up in the city of St. Louis, that was for June 9th tax, your property up to be sold, it was postponed to October. So all taxes in the city of St. Louis, the property tax was postponed to October. So that, that'll take some weight off you, especially those that were working every day trying to make their tax money, and all of a sudden disaster hit. So this was something that was very well designed here. So it's something good and everything, if you look at it the right way, that comes out of some things that don't make sense. But however, I want to say thanks again to the board, and let's move forward and try to find all the money we can to cause $30 million is only 1% of the problem in St. Louis that's been happening since Team 4. Thank you.
All right, I'll pass it down to President Green.
First off, I want to thank all the community for coming, for staying, for a very long hearing tonight, and for lending your voice. I want to reiterate a, a couple things, you know, that we heard from everybody tonight, and we all, I think, are in agreement here. We know $30 million is not enough. It's not going to be enough. And we, and the, the point is to have a start to address some emergency needs, to make sure people have houses to go to or shelter to go to, food to eat, can start basic repairs. And the, the other thing I want to be clear about too is, now that FEMA is here, the city cannot duplicate the efforts of FEMA, or we lose that portion of FEMA money. So everything we do in design has to be to complement or fill gaps that FEMA has created or still exists. So if you have not filled out your FEMA forms, please do that. Because what that FEMA forms, and we can help you afterwards, what the, what the applying for FEMA funds will help you with is you can get up to $770 for emergency needs, $43,600 for home repair, $43,600 for other costs you incurred, if that's a, you know, anything from furniture to cars being destroyed, things like that. You can get emergency SNAP and unemployment benefits if you were out of work because of the tornado, and they are providing up to 18 months of housing assistance, including down payment and up to two months in advance of, of paying to relocate folks to housing while they rebuilt. And so now that, I'll take some questions at the, the end. So now that FEMA is here, and we start to know what resources they are providing, that then allows us to help to design how we are going to deploy our funds to complement what FEMA is doing. And so that's part of the reason that the, the bill is, is written kind of broad, is because we want to have that flexibility to fill those needs that FEMA and the, and the state money too is not able to, to fill. I also want to clarify something for some of our nonprofit orgs over here. So that 5% is only a cap on city administration. It is not a cap on nonprofits, and the bill specifically says you can hire staffing as a part of the money. Because we know that our nonprofits have depleted a lot of their resources, and the reason we specifically called out organizations is we want to make sure that those groups that have been on the ground doing the work are getting compensated for that work. Because it is not sustainable for folks to continue to do this work without any kind of support or compensation. I also want to make it clear that the deadline that was on the one flyer that was handed out, that deadline is to apply for FEMA funds, it's not a deadline for our funds. And so we have a lot more flexibility with our money than, than there is with, with the FEMA money. In terms of, had a question about plan for rebuilding block by block, that has to happen with community. And we can't be, as a city, prescribing this is how we're going to rebuild everything because it's got to be resident-led. And as one of the three members on E&amp;A, that is something that I'm committed to fighting for, is making sure that anytime we are deploying these funds, we are doing so in a way that has the consent and buy-in of communities that that development is happening in. Also, to the question about can homeowners get funds from both the federal, state, and local? Yes, and that's what we want you to do. Get those federal funds. Because FEMA's here, those are being deployed quickly. It can be just a few days before you get those funds. And, and that's why, you know, we, we had in the first day over 2,000 people go and apply for FEMA, but we know that the need is much higher than that. Programs for youth, that is absolutely what we anticipate some of the organizations that will step up for that gap funding will go to. Because we know our youth were hit hard. We know that there were 42 childcare providers that were impacted by the storm, and it impacted over 1,000 students. And that is not even taking into account the SOPS students that, that have been impacted. Funds to replace homes, yes, that is definitely something that this funding can be used for, for kind of that gap funding piece. And additional funds, I have said this from the beginning, every funding mechanism is on the table. That means every dime of Rams money is on the table, that means our reserves are on the table, that means looking at how we can reallocate any ARPA dollars, that's on the table. It is all on the table. Because we have to recognize that, as many said tonight, the Northside was disinvested before the tornado. And that $1.6 billion that we see thrown around is to put the Northside and the Westside back to where it was pre-tornado. That is not good enough. We have to use this as that opportunity to make whole and right some wrongs that have been done for a very long time. And so I want you to hold me accountable to that, as one of the members on, on E&amp;A, one of the people who oversees the budget and determines how contracts are issued. Hold me accountable to that. But also hold the mayor and the comptroller accountable to it. Because we are the three people that sit on those selection committees, determine who gets contracts, determine how money gets spent. And so we are the three people that community has to stay on to make sure that we do right by everybody who was impacted by the storm. And so with that, I just want to, I want to thank all of the public for coming out. I want to thank all of the members of the Board of Aldermen who have been out on the ground since day one. I mean, most of us, the, the day after the storm, a good number of us showed up at the People's Response Hub and just said, put us to work because we, you know, we're not prepared for this, right? And, and that's, that's an apology that I want to make on behalf of the city. We were not prepared for this. We were not prepared to go three and a half weeks without having federal assistance. We had not built that into our systems. We thought that if anything, we might go a couple of days, maybe a week, without some outside help. And that is our fault for not building that system to be able to operate and support our organizations, stand in the gap while we were waiting for federal assistance. And I think all of us recognize that now, and, and there is a, a commitment to make sure that we do better going forward. So if there is another tornado that hits St. Louis, that we are in a better place in the future than we are today. So with that, I won't keep talking because I, I know everybody probably wants to get home, including members of the committee, so I will turn it back over to Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Thank you, Madam President. Absolutely, thank you. Do any of our colleagues have any questions before we allow President Green to close? It was moved by Alderman Combs and seconded by everyone. It's seconded by Alderman Browning that we move Board Bill 31 as amended with the due Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Aye.
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 Chair, call the board.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
All right, with that, we have successfully passed that. Madam Clerk, I know we have one piece of written testimony that I saw from, written testimony. It's dry. Okay, thank you. All right, any additional announcements? All members were present, so we don't have any need for excuse. So I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
It was moved by Vice Chair Spiege and seconded by Alderwoman Swyster with the previous role, so we are adjourned. Everyone be safe getting home. Have a blessed night.